Counselors, if you'd take your seat, please. Counselors, please take your seats. Good evening. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire if anyone is actively taping the session to please make their presence known. This session is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18. Anyone recording? Nope, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you could do the roll call. Thank you.
Counselors, Beeden Bender.
Here.
Bogan.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Cullen.
Here.
Dagwan.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Leveque.
Present.
Meery.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Shaughnessy.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Steinhilde.
Here.
Thirteen.
Thank you. If we could all please rise and mindfully say the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to send our condolences and keep the family of Agnes Murray from Kootenay in our thoughts and prayers. Agnes was almost a lifelong resident of the village of Kootenay and served as the treasurer for the Kootenay Fire District for 42 years. So our thoughts go out to her family. Thank you.
Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, you might notice we have some very young people with us this evening, and they're still all in school. So what we'd like to do, and if the council would approve, I would like to move the presentations, we have two this evening, to right now so that our young people can get home and keep up with their studies and guess, a good night's sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Welcome, everybody, tonight. Tonight, we're honoring the Barnstable Silver Bullets' Midgets Division II Super Bowl Champions. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. Lots to be proud of. I appreciate all you guys being here today. I know some of you probably skipped hockey practice or basketball practice to be here and receive this honor. And again, I really appreciate all the hard work that you put in, the coaches. It's not an easy job to win a Super Bowl. It's a, you know, week in, week out, practicing. I know how much you practice. I know how much, again, work and time you put into it. Your young bodies take a beating, and you do battle. And really, again, appreciate all the hard work that you went in. And again, congratulations. That being said, I did, I'd be remiss not to mention, this would be something that James H. Crocker Jr. would be behind, being the fact that he was a founding father, one of the few men who actually started the Silver Bullets back when there was no Pop Warner football in the town of Barnstable. And he took it upon himself, along with the Dacey family, to really put that together and make this happen. So this is also his legacy, as we sit in the room, named after him as well. And also, too, I wanted to remember head coach Chris Coffin's father, Paul Coffin, who I knew, because I coached, I guess you could say, against him in Barnstable Little League, but with him. I consider him a mentor to my friend Steve Harmon, whom many of you might know through the 4th and 5th grade schools, a math teacher. And again, Paul Coffin was a very supportive volunteer of both Barnstable Little League and Silver Bullets football here in Barnstable. And he will, his passing this past August, I remember, I believe, and so we remember him as well, and we dedicate this to him, so. So that, all being said, if, as I call your name, if you could come up, receive your certificate, and stay up here, and we'll take a photograph afterwards. And we can save applause till after everybody's name has been called, please. So first of all, first and foremost, I'd like to call up head coach Chris Coffin. You're welcome. Assistant coach Cam LaRivier. Okay, we'll put that aside, and I will get that to council administrator Cindy Lovell, and she will hand those, make sure they find the people that they belong to. So also, assistant coach Devin Brodley. Okay. Chris Johnson. Just make sure I give everybody, Tom Mendez. And also Alex Lemay. And now for the Gladiators. Jordan Cabral. Shane Carroll. Here we go. Brenda Coelho. Daniel Cordero. Morgan Danzel. Matthew De Silva. He's also number one, by the way. Tough to live up to. Bernardo De Souza. Jadas Dixon. John Espinoza. Samuel Faria, Toledo. Antoine Flowers. Somebody I had the privilege of coaching on my baseball team this past year, and also on the All-Stars of Baseball the last few years, Karan Ford. Akeem Forskin. Tajado France. Aidan Giacobi. Jeremiah Gonzaga. Austin Hamilton. Colin Haron. A.J. Henigan. Cameron Hool. Aidan Kundal. Spencer Lavalley. Jontay Lee. Cameron Little. Eric Lovell. Andrew Lovell. Darius Matheny. You can clap for him, though, he's a great kid. Also had a chance to coach him as well. Great kid, great, great athlete. Benjamin Maxwell. Darius Mendes. Evan O'Neil. I know some of you wishing, couldn't this be a golf team? Hunter Parent. You can make two lines, there you go. Logan Parent. One of my constituents, Logan. Steven Pereira. Jackson Pereira. Cole Raposo. Iago Salameo. Congratulations. Jordan Saunders. Joseph Sequentia. Brandon Silva. Isaiah Stoddard. Darren Thomas. Siddiqi Dan Reel. Here we have it, Barnstable Silver Bullets' Midgets Division II Super Bowl Champions. Give them a round of applause. Congratulations, guys. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you, Councilor Leveque. Actually, okay, leave it there. Okay, so now we'd like to call up Mr. Bob Schulte and his wife Anne, and has the little brother arrived? Sean is here, if you could come on, Sean, thanks. Okay. Apparently, they're passing this out. Can I just have those flowers right over there? We're going to come right down to you. Oh, have them all come up, have everybody come up, everybody come up. Thank you.
All right, you want to start?
So we're honored tonight to have Mr. Bob Schulte here tonight, who's declared the big brother in all of Massachusetts. So I think it's got to be at least about 5,000 big brothers in, am I correct?
I don't know.
Well, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good.
Five million.
In Massachusetts. So he was selected as the biggest brother, if you will, in 2019 for all of Massachusetts.
I just want to say, I couldn't have done it without my little brother Sean. I want to thank his mom, Ellen Hansen, and Krista Danilowicz from Big Brothers, Big Sisters. They are just a tremendous organization here on the Cape and Islands. And again, without Sean and without the support of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, I couldn't have done it, so, thank you.
How important is Big Brothers and Big Sisters? I operated the Champ Homes for 25 years, and to my knowledge, there never was a little sister or little brother come looking for housing, because they were always helped and protected by their big brother, big sister. So a wonderful, wonderful organization. We have a citation to read.
Thank you, and if you're wondering why I'm reading it, Bob is one of my constituents. So congratulations, it's really wonderful, and all the lives you've been able to change. Our children need great mentors, and you have been that to so many. So, "The town of Barnstable Town Council does hereby recognize Robert 'Bob' Schulte as Massachusetts 2019 Big Brother of the Year. This well-deserved honor spotlights the quality and dedication of the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Cape Cod and the Islands program, particularly in acknowledging Bob's outstanding mentoring and partnering with his little brother Sean. With the greatest appreciation and gratitude, the residents of the town of Barnstable... Thank you."
Thank you very much. Okay, we'd like to open it up now for public comment. We invite you to come, please remember to sign in, and please try to keep it to three minutes or less. Thank you very much.
Hello? Oh, Tina Carey from Hyannis and Centerville. I'm just here tonight to inform the council that three members of the Hyannis Historic District resigned yesterday. And I would have to say that you cannot have a board within a board, and I think I was here a year ago protesting that putting bid board members on the historic board where they're making decisions about their contenders was a conflict of interest. And the reasons that, I know of one, the reason is, is because of the constant conflicts of interest of having a board within a board. And I've said this to the Appointments Committee, and Mrs. Rap Grissette's family has property in the bid and on Main Street, which I believe is also a conflict of interest, because she's appointing people that are in the bid to the historic board. It's become very convoluted, very confusing, and people are just fed up with it. And I also would like to thank the new people that are on the council. I hope that you will just do one thing, and that is listen to the public. Because we don't come here because we want to, we don't come here to be constant complaining. We come here because we want changes. And I hope that you will be the new people that do that. Thank you very much. I'm just going to quickly sign in.
My name is Jane LaCasse, and I live in Marston's Mills, and I just wanted to talk for a minute and give you sort of a perspective from a 97-year-old resident about our new village revitalization project. We affectionately call her Graham. She was born in Marston's Mills on River Road and spent her married life on Main Street, where she still lives right now. Sometimes, we know that change is challenging, but I wanted you to hear her impression of the Mills' Philly project and what she has to say about it. She has been driven up and down that 149 in River Road and Main Street throughout the entire project. My dear friends Audrey and April have driven her through a million times. She has seen each and every aspect of what we call the big dig. I think each police officer and every Lawrence Lynch and every COMM worker must know her by name by now. She has loved and accepted each and every phase of the project, just being able to envision the life and vitality that it will bring to our village. Sometimes, we feel a little bit left out way over in the Mills, but not this time. Recently, we were leaving a board meeting at the church, and she, I was driving out, and she said, "Oh, my goodness, the lights are on. Can you take me all the way around so I can see each and every light?" I have to say, it was not me that noticed them, it was her. She oohed and aahed at each light as if each one was put in for her 97 years. I thought to myself, this is the reason we do things like this, and this is the reason we accept change. We kept her abreast of all of the emails that Paul Graves so kindly forwarded to us so she would know exactly what the next steps were. She knew when the paving was going to take place. I had blood work early that morning and swung by early to pick her up. She jumped out of her wheelchair into a walker into my car. She couldn't believe she got to drive down the new pavement on Route 149. She just said, "I can't believe how nice this feels without any bumps." So we went up to Dunkin' Donuts, got her favorite donut, and as we headed back down 149, she looked up Main Street just as the pavers were coming down, and she looked up there, and she said, "In my whole lifetime, I never thought that I would see the village look so beautiful and that Main Street would be paved again." So we went ever so slowly up so she could see all of it. I'm a member of Marston's Mills Village Association and am so very thankful and grateful to the town for their support, information sharing before, during, and after every single phase of this project. Paul Graves and Kip Diggs, as well as others, have been very responsive, answering questions, sending emails, and attending our village association meetings. Our town counselors, Matt and Paula, bring us new and updated information each month and are always ready to help as well. All of the Barnstable Police Officers, as well as the COMM Water Department people, all of the Lawrence Lynch workers were professional and patient throughout the project. The workers smiled and waved at us, because they got to know us very well with Graham driving up and down. I am thankful for all of the work that has gone into this. It warms my heart to see a dad walking up the hill with his daughter to the library and a family walking hand in hand over the bridge to the duck pond. I know it has not come without a few kinks, but I am thankful for all of the work that has gone on, and I just want you to know that we appreciate it so much. Graham says tonight, "Thank you to all," and she loves her new village. She can't wait for the stroll on Saturday to see it from the pavement up, is what she said. She hopes that as the bumps slow the traffic down, everyone will see what a beautiful village that it is and all of the things that we have to offer way out in Marston's Mills. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gerald Madigan, and I live at Seven Settlers Lane here in Hyannis. I am representing roughly better than 300 people who are in opposition of a tractors supply outfit that is trying to get an application to be built between Bear's Way and Pitcher's Way. We have many issues brought up with this application, but it's before the Cape Cod Commission at this time. I sat down with town manager Mark Ellis, and he recommended that I come before the council to see if we can sit down and talk and discuss issues for the people in their immediate area. We've got over 800 houses in our immediate area, and they want to put a farmer's supply in there, and it's just going to be devastating for everybody. You're going to have a bike path coming down there, you're going to have the Cape Cod Resort will be opening up full-time for the summer, you're going to have their water park going once the bike path gets going, you're going to have kids with bicycles all over the area, you're going to have trailer trucks coming in there hauling material into a farmer's supply outfit, tractor supply outfit. It's just ridiculous. I mean, somebody's got to sit down, we can explain our issues to them, and if we can get some principles across and try and get this thing ironed out, I think it's going to be for the benefit of Hyannis, because I don't see anything but deprimates to what this project will bring, because it's going to lower tax values, it's going to lower the tax rates for people, or their valuation on their houses are going to go. And all they're going to do is have a $2 million bill in here. It's not going to do anything more than your K-Marts, your Agways, your Home Depots, and all your other places you've got here, to just bring another store and putting it in the middle of roughly a residential area. So if I could make some arrangements to speak with members of the council at a certain time, I'd really appreciate it. I've given a package to your secretary, Mrs. Lovell, and she's going to make up some packages for you various members to read. And if we could get together and discuss them, you know, within a week or so, I'd love that, you know? I mean, there's just too much of that. We have a Facebook page, it's Concerned Citizens, Hyannis Concerned Citizens Against Tractor Supply. The last time I counted, it was over 1,500 people viewing it, so, I mean, it gets bigger all the time. And this is just too much. And this is just too much. Where it is, the traffic is astronomical. When you start putting 132 and you got your tourist attractions coming in during the course of the year, it's, where do you put these people? You get a bike path opening up within a year? It's just too much. I mean, I have to sit down, I can't do it all right now, but if I sat down and isolated these problems we have out with various members of you, I think we could handle this pretty easily. And Mark Ellis is right behind us. Plus, I talked with Paul Arco, and he's got a lot of issues too coming up. So, I thank you for your time. Anyone else like to speak? Mr. Chu, would you like to speak?
My name is Bo Chu. Sometimes they call me Dr. Bo. I live at 77 Winter Street the past few nights, and I'm grateful to be endorsed. I was politely asked not to sing, and I don't know if that's because... But it's a good thing, because I may be a little bit too iconoclastic, and maybe I didn't rehearse, and maybe I didn't, I don't know. But anyhow, here we go. Who's got... I didn't do my timing, but I'm gonna read, okay? "No one is happy all the time, and that's okay. Feeling your way is just as important as ordering your way. Burger King supports the work of Mental Health America. Inside, I made an inscription to Tracy S., Queen of Precinct Nine, King of the Burgers. From Dr. Bo, King of Precinct Nine. And this is CC, which used to mean carbon copy in the days of typewriters, Baron Trump. And so I, with my air guitar, premises of things to come, promises and premises. This is just one fake air guitar for the camera. I don't know.
My name is Joanne Uckman, and I'm a member of the Centerville Concerned Citizens. We recently asked you to consider adding C.C. Doucet of Wireless Education to an upcoming agenda to speak to the dangers of 5G. We would like to bring to your attention tonight a November 19 letter from Congressman Daniel Lipinski of Illinois to the Chairman of the FCC requesting information about research studies used by the FCC in the agency's decision-making regarding radio frequency exposure, safety standards, excuse me. He has been contacted by many of his constituents with questions regarding RF exposure safety, given the widespread deployment of new technologies in telecommunications 5G. Also of note today, Senator Dick Durbin has joined Senator Dianne Feinstein to co-sponsor Bill S-2012, the Restoring Local Control Over Public Infrastructure Act of 2019. This act will overrule the gross overreach of the FCC and restore local and state control. We have both the bill for you and the letter from Congressman Lipinski with the town clerk. We look forward to working with our town leaders to take back the control stripped by the FCC.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Bill Cobal, Centerville. I wasn't gonna speak, but 5G, it's very important that we get that. Otherwise, we're going backward in history. Don't be fooled. It's very important that we get it. That's all I'm gonna say. Can you hear that? He's saying it's very important.
Good evening. My name is Margot Weber. I live at 364 Main Street in Centerville. I planned to come here this evening to urge the council to reconsider the purchase and destruction of a lovely, single-family residence located at 310 Main Street, right at the gateway of the, actually immediately adjacent to the Centerville Historic District for sewer construction purposes, specifically to be used as a sewer pump station. I'm now here to express my disappointment when I learned that the purchase went through and to urge this council and relevant town officials to immediately begin the process of getting state approval to use Mother's Park, a small section of Mother's Park, as a sewer pump instead. Mother's Park remains the only approved location for the sewer, a submersible sewer pump for the Long Pond Sewer Expansion from 2003. A simple internet search will turn up a 293-page engineering report supporting that location. As recently as the FY19 Capital Improvement Plan, the pump was located at Mother's Park. I am confident that the team that recently obtained all the necessary approvals for the massive Vineyard Wind Project in cooperation with the state will be able to achieve this small approval to use Mother's Park as a sewer pump station. And I can pledge personally, and probably on behalf of our neighbors, our full support and cooperation in that effort, and I hope that we will continue to be involved in the process.
Good evening, councilors. Bill Robbins, 320 Main Street, one of the Centerville complainers, as we've been dubbed by the media. Just want to express that I'm saddened by how it went down, that we didn't have a chance to work on looking at some other locations for the proposed project. So I am now here to advocate for Mother's Park and then for the town to move on and put the house that they purchased back on the market and return it to the private sector as soon as possible.
Good evening, friends. Town councilors, Chuck Tuttle, longtime Centerville resident and Barnstable taxpayer. Yesterday at 2:43 PM, the imminent domain taking of 310 Main Street, Centerville, by the town of Barnstable was recorded at the Registry of Deeds. The town purchased the property, a freestanding, single-family home, as part of the process to develop a plan to add sewer-ing to an area of concern in the town of Barnstable. As you know, there are many here among us who feel that purchasing single-family homes and tearing them down for sewer pump stations is a terribly dangerous precedent, some would say fiscally irresponsible. We understand that the purchase of 310 Main Street was done purely out of an abundance of caution and coincidental opportunity to ensure that the eventual infrastructure construction can actually take place on schedule. We have received the town's commitment to pursue Article 97 permission to use a portion of Mother's Park in Centerville for the wastewater pump. I'm told this process will take nine to 12 months and require a two-thirds vote in both the House and Senate at the state level. We were also told that the town does not want to own houses that it does not need. So we fully expect that once the Article 97 permission is granted, about a year from now, the town will put 310 Main Street back on the market to be sold and used for its highest and best use, a single-family home. That is great. We look forward to seeing the house back on the market this time next year after Article 97 permission has been secured by the town. I speak for hundreds of Barnstable taxpayers when I say that using town land is greatly preferable to pulling homes off the tax rolls for sewer pump station sites. What we have all learned from this 310 Main Street debacle is that the process to identify sewer pump station sites, of which we will need about three dozen more, is severely flawed. When the idea to purchase the home at 310 Main Street for a sewer pump station was introduced, a few residents were given less than a week's notice of the vote, a letter delivered on a Friday in advance of a Thursday meeting. That next town council meeting saw at least 150 Barnstable taxpayers show up and speak in opposition to the idea. The vote was finally taken five minutes before 11:00 PM. Crazy. Subsequently, we had a village meeting, which was attended by three town councilors here tonight, Britt Bedenbender, Paul Neary, and Matt Leveque. Thanks for being there. Really appreciate it. The large meeting room at the village hall was packed, standing room only. 100 village and town residents showed up to learn more about the idea of purchasing a single-family home and tearing it down for a sewer pump, and the resident taxpayers stood in strong opposition to that idea. So the village became engaged. People became aware of what the town was pursuing in terms of sewer infrastructure. So the net of the exercise has been productive in that respect. Let us all use this debacle as a lesson. The town needs to engage villages and residents well before it decides to purchase land and homes for sewer pump sites. I don't have all the answers, but I do know that this drama could have been largely avoided had there been better communication about the town's intent. I, for one, am pleased that the town is continuing to pursue a wastewater management plan and that they are proactive in their approach to make sure that the construction process of our Big Dig goes as smoothly as possible. Please, let's develop a process to better communicate the town's intent to the residents who are directly and significantly impacted by the town's actions. And finally, thank you in advance for earnestly pursuing Article 97 permission to use part of Mother's Park for the wastewater management pump in the Long Pond area of concern. And oh, a Christmas elf has shared with me today that now that the town owns 310 Main Street in Centerville, there may very well be Christmas lights along the white picket fence in time for the Centerville Christmas stroll.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Rowey Covell, and I live in Centerville. And I'm just here to agree with Chuck Tuttle, and I'm here to ask that they use the town's land at Mother's Park for the proposed wastewater management pump and to resell 310 Main Street to a private individual as soon as possible. Thank you.
And my name is Judy Quinn. I live at 80 Wilton Drive. I'm here with my neighbor, Rowey, to agree with her comments and the comments of many of the people that live in Centerville. Thank you. I'm proud to put my name here with Rowey.
Good evening. Brian Covell from Centerville, Wilton Drive. And about a month or two ago, I came in here with 150 people, and we told about the short notice that we're given, and only one counselor, you know, said, "Let's cool it for a little bit and let it pan out, you know, get organized." But we voted 10 to 1, and I can't sleep at night thinking about that. It's like we didn't matter. And that's all I want to say about that right now.
One last thing. Bill Cobal, Centerville. I'll sign in now. Do we have a real estate division in this town? Could someone go out and, like other places do, could check the properties, find out what the prices are, and make deals for us? I don't think we do. Because I know we talked, I heard him talk about, we don't have anybody to do that. He said at the meetings. We should have that. You know, they could pay for their own salaries out of this, hopefully. I know Boston does, other cities do. Why don't, we're a city. Why don't we have this? Go on, hire somebody to do it, you know? Go to Boston, get one of those jokers up there to come down here and do it, you know?
Hello, Karen Quinn from Centerville. Couple questions. I know you can't answer, but maybe someone can get back to me with answers on these questions. There's a treatment plant on West Main Street. Are you familiar? In front of the elementary school? Yes? You're familiar with the brick building there? If someone could get back to me and let me know the year that was built, I believe it was over 10 years ago. Has it ever been used? I don't, has it ever been used? I don't believe it has been used. I'd like to know how much it costs to build that building. I heard it was in the millions of taxpayer money. And I'd like to know how much has the taxpayer been charged for this over the 10 years? What's going on with that building? And is that what's gonna happen to 310 Main Street? Is it gonna sit for 10 years? Will we pay for it when Mother's Park was free? I mean, everyone seems to remember that doors were knocked on around Mother's Park, and there was pushback against Mother's Park. Everyone can clearly remember that supposedly, although my neighbor has lived there since he was a child, and nobody knocked on his door, and he stares right at Mother's Park. So if everyone can remember that doors were knocked on 10 years ago from Mother's Park, I'd like answers to these questions as to what that building is doing, the treatment plant on West Main Street that's been sitting for 10 years, being paid by taxpayer money, and what it cost, because it was in the millions, and it's sitting there.
My name is Joe Butera. I still live at 352 Main Street in Centerville, but I did live at 87 Winter Street once, very close to where my dear friend lives. I'm very disappointed. I just heard a few minutes ago that you purchased that land. And we had a meeting last week, and I thought at that point, I was very happy to see a few of you there. I thought, maybe that might open the door to think about this a little bit. But I guess it did, and I think it was a slam dunk from the first time Jimmy was in here and looked at you and said, "Got anything to say?" And you said, "Yeah, I voted we do this." And everyone was petrified, voted against it because it would look as though you were voting against the sewer. I don't know how much you knew about how people felt about this, but we found out about it. I'm a neighbor, and I found out about it two days before. Very unfair. That's not the way to conduct anything, not to mention, had anyone thought of putting an option to buy this house for a year? Six months, it's been on the market for two years. There are four houses for sale on Main Street right now. They've been up for two years. Who's gonna buy a house in January or February to invest in for the summer? I don't think the market's that great. If four houses are still in the... I think you jumped a gun. I'm really sorry about it, because I think that house would still be in the market. It may have even come down in price if you waited six months. That's a juxtaposition on my part. I probably shouldn't be saying that because I don't have a true answer. But I do hope you pursue Mother's Park, because I think that's the way to go. It seems everyone's very upset still of the decision to run out and shoot from the hip and buy this thing before it disappears. Who is gonna buy it? Anybody up there wanna buy? I don't wanna buy it. There's four other houses in this... There's four other houses in this street, and there's two further down. There are very nice houses on the other side of the lights, towards Craigville. Anyway, I'd like to back what Chuck said, and I thank him for saying what he did, and I hope you consider whatever this proposal is, which I know nothing about, to pursue purchasing Mother's Park, because I think that's in the best interest of everyone involved, because it will work. I mean, it was approved by the Department of Public Works. I know it'll work. And why it wasn't pursued earlier, I don't know. But I'm sorry it wasn't.
Hi, I'm Joyce Frederick. I live at 382 Main Street. I'm five houses down from 310 Main Street. I bought my house there six years ago, and I bought it as-is. I didn't realize how bad as-is was, and I have since put $300,000 into my house. But looking around, I realized that the neighborhood was qualified to, it was a good investment for me. I go by that, the park every day, and 310 Main Street, and I just think 310 Main Street is one of the cutest houses in Centerville, and it's sort of, we don't have McMansions on Main Street, and it's so nice to have a small cape with a, with a nice white picket fence. It's everybody's dream house. And I just live, love living in the neighborhood. It's safe, the people are wonderful. And while you can't put the pump house in Mother's Park, you can cover it nicely, camouflage it nicely with landscaping, and leave that beautiful house instead of tearing it down.
Hi, I'm Wendy Crocker Peacock. I, you know, I want to publicly thank Chuck Tuttle, because I think he did an amazing job spearheading Precinct Four and having a community meeting. I feel like Chuck, amazing. It gave us an opportunity to meet with our neighbors and share ideas and do some brainstorming, and I thank the councilors that attended. So I'm certainly here to advocate, well, first of all, I'm grateful that 310 hasn't been torn down, as my six-year-old son will say, because we pass it every day on the walk to school. Mommy, why would they tear down a perfectly good house? And I'm going to echo that. I'm, I'm still, I think, a little disillusioned over it all, and I think that we really need to explore Mother's Park and pursue Article 97. And I hope, I'm hopeful that 310 Main Street, Centerville, will become Plan B and be sold as a family home, so there's more children in my neighborhood to play and to walk to school with. You know, also with regard to Mother's Park, I think over time, I don't think it was the intention, but over time, a road, a throughway, has formed, and I think that road is really supposed to be part of the park. So in my mind, I wonder if it could be a land swap for potentially housing a pump station there. So I want to thank everybody for their time and listening, and I certainly, I feel very encouraged by my neighbors in Precinct Four. You're a remarkable group of people, and sometimes, unfortunately, when things don't go the way as intended, you get together with remarkable people and you make things happen.
You just have this vibe, did you?
Hi there. Ralph Baird, 317 Main Street. I know we're short on time. I'll keep it brief. I agree with everything all my neighbors and friends and, you know, others in the community around 310 Main Street have said. Now that the house is acquired, or will be acquired, at 310 Main Street, what I'd like to ask is, you've told us you'll work with us on this. I'd like to ask you, please, you know, continue to work with us. I thought we had a really constructive meeting at the REC Center on Centerville Main Street a couple weeks back. We're concerned, you know, we, you know where we stand on this? We think there are better options in 310 Main Street. Mother's Park, for example, seems to be a very good option. We're worried about what happens to 310 Main Street. You know, even if the sewer pump station doesn't go in there ultimately, you know, what's going to happen there? I don't think we've heard many details about that. We've heard some ideas of what could be done. So I would, I would just ask, please, keep the lines of communication open. Let's continue to work together. I think we've made progress since I stood here before you a couple months ago. I know we've all gotten a lot more educated, as Chuck said, about the whole, the whole process, the whole plan, but, you know, please, continue to work with us. We have ideas, you know, we have, you can tell, you know, we have a lot of people that are willing to, you know, to join hands with you and, and try to do the right thing here. So I just want to go on the record as saying that. I know we've been in touch many ways other than standing here at the public forum of your, of your meeting, but I just want to go on the record again as saying, you know, we appreciate the dialogue that you've started with us, and we'd like to keep that going.
Anyone else? Anyone else would like to speak? Please, come on forward right now.
Left my notes at home, so I had to put them on here. Name is John Finn. I live at 254 Long Pond Road of Master Mills. Just had a woman here talking about how beautiful Master Mills looks, looks great. Now they want to put 15,000 solar panels up there in 19 acres. Now that is just the beginning of it, and I just can't understand you, if you're going to put 15,000 solar panels up there, and it's only going to supply enough power for 700 homes, to me, that just doesn't seem to balance. And the only winner out of this, and that land, 810 Wakeby Road, has been dug up. It was a sand pit at one time. There was a junkyard at one time, and they dug it up again to cap the dump in Master Mills. Master Mills has been dumped on so many times. This guy wants to lease this property out and put those solar panels in. He's going to get $120,000 or $150,000 a year for 20 years, and I'll tell you, after 20 years, those solar panels will be rotting in the ground, because he ain't going to do nothing. And I just want the, the land, the land butters, land butters right over there, they're going to look out their window, and they're going to see a sea of solar panels. And these people, a lot of these people have been living here for 40 years, and their house value is going to tank. And there's another piece of property up there, which is 12 acres, that's owned by someone up in North Hampton, that area. When he finds out what Mr. Keys is going to be getting for his 19 acres, he's going to clear cut, and he's going to put his solar panels in. To me, putting solar panels in a residential area is wrong. It's like putting a pumping station, put it in the park, makes sense to me. Put these things in airports. When I first seen solar panels in an airport or the landfill, I go, wow, that's a great idea. Someone was using their brain. But to put it in a residential area is wrong. I live on the pond. I see bald eagles flying up there. They go over to that area, they nest. I can remember in 86, up in Clubbin Reservoir, when they first started getting the eagles up there, everybody was happy. Great, it's great to have them. We have them in our backyard, and we want to rip them out of there. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. Excuse me, my, losing my voice. Why can't the land bank buy this piece of property and save it, instead of ripping it apart again? That's all I say. Do the right thing.
Anyone else would like to speak? All right. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to close the public comment? Second? Thank you. We're now open for councilors to speak on public comment. Counselor Beedenbender?
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Okay. So just a quick note to Joanne. Thank you so much for bringing the topic of C.C. Doucette up again. We will continue that conversation, so I just want you to know, it is still, still in the ether, and it's swirling around, okay? This is to Margot, Bill, Joyce, Wendy, Joyce, Karen, Judy, and everyone else who showed up surrounding 310. Chuck, you are absolutely correct. We, and I said it that night at town council, that the way this came about and how it was communicated was wrong, without a question. And we immediately started discussion with our town manager and the head of our DPW as to how we can do a better job going forward, because this is not the way to do it, right? So know that we are committed to that, and those conversations have already started happening, and they continue. After we had that meeting at the REC building, that next morning, I went to Mark Els, and I said to him, "I want us to fully focus on Mother's Park. I know we have to buy 310, but I want us to pursue Article 97 on Mother's Park 100%." That is underway as we speak. Our legal department is working on it. So I want you to know that that process has already begun, and it is my hope that Mother's Park does completely pan out. But it is an Article 97, which means it has to have three, a supermajority of the legislature in order to, to, to pass. So there's still a lift, and it's not guaranteed, but know that we are pursuing that. Now, what I would ask is that the passion and the energy and the commitment that you've shown on this issue regarding 310 and the purchase of that house, I really encourage you that you show this kind of enthusiasm and support and advocacy for Mother's Park when it starts becoming out there in the public and we start actually having to take votes on things, because we will need broad public support for that, because I would be surprised if people don't come out in opposition of that. So we're going to need you to be the loudest voice in the room, okay? I understand your concern about the town owning 310 and what's going to happen with, with it. I promise you, and I've had this conversation with Mark Els, our DPW, we are all in agreement. We have no interest in owning that piece of property if we do not need it for the pump station. So when, hopefully, Mother's Park passes, we will put that, that house out for, for, for sale. So that is a commitment that we share. The woman in the back, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. I can't speak to a lot of your questions around, around West Main, but I will respond to them in regards to how they reflected on 310. And I will tell you that any, any pump station in that area is, is not going to look like that, okay? That's a very different type of facility. What we're talking about is something much smaller, can be, and we can't, sorry, we can't go back and forth. So, okay. So, so it, to your point of, is it going to sit for 10 years, so and so forth? No. That, that comprehensive wastewater management plan, when that septic line goes in, we need pump stations at the same time, and as soon as we can make that go live, we will, and that plan is within this first 10-year period. So that's the plan that DPW has, and I know our town manager is committed to that, and as we are as well, because our environment is number one. And so we're going to pursue that. Someone mentioned about the driveway, just as a, as a point of information, it sounded like you were talking about the potential sighting of the pump station on that road that goes above Mother's Park. That is not possible. That's way too high, and the engineering cost to pipe it down to make it to a pump station just doesn't work. What we are looking at, though, is eliminating that road and, and maybe providing parking instead, because it is a traffic hazard. So I'm working with, with our town manager on that as well. And yes, we will continue to communicate with you, as, I mean, you know, all of you have reached, who have reached out to me, I've responded to you, whether it's a phone call, a text, or an email. Hours and hours I have communicated with various people on this. So you have my commitment that I will continue that communication. And as we move forward, fingers crossed if Mother's Park does become, become a reality, we will work with you to figure out what is going to be the best design for that. If you want it to look like a park and we just ensconce it in rhododendrons, or if you want a little shed there, that's what we'll do. So the communication will continue, and I just want you to have my assurance that we have listened to you and we have responded, and we are moving forward with Mother's Park as we speak. Thank you.
Counselor Snapp.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the comments by Jane LaCasse. I know Counselor Levesque shares, shares that, that someone would come up and share that story. It has been a long haul, a number of years, both in design work and the construction, and we've had lots of meetings, and I can't say enough for the, the staff response to the concerns by the businesses on 149 and the neighbors. It has really been a team effort to bring this to fruition. And so I think it's an example of, of our commitment, and, and I would like to echo Counselor Beedenbender's, that, that we're here to make the best of, of, of all possibilities. I mean, we're not here to create ISOs and, you know, but we, we have very real environmental issues that we have to address, and we're trying to do things in the most cost-effective way. So please bear with us, trust us, continue the communication, and at all times, let's remain civil in our communication, because I think that's, that's important. I did want to address Mr. Finn. We have had some action on that, and it will either be announced later to this meeting, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Councilors. Mr. Levesque.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Just wanted to mirror both comments, both by Counselor Beedenbender and Counselor Snapp. You know, I was at that meeting in Centerville, and we definitely heard you. We are looking ways to improve communications. Again, and I back what Counselor Beedenbender has, has said, you know, this is basically a insurance policy, and I would be very much behind supporting Mother's Park first and foremost, and then seeing what we can do. I'm definitely not in favor of the town becoming a greater landlord, and so we would definitely move forward and make sure that that was approached before we go forward with anything with 310 Main Street. That being said, also wanted to mirror Counselor Snapp's. I actually spoke with Graham yesterday, and I knew that Jane was going to be coming and speaking today. Graham actually had her power shut off yesterday as they were moving, doing poll work, and, and she's an incredible lady, and again, the patriarch of Marson's Mills Village there on Main Street. And the only complaint, she says, "Oh, it's fine, I'm fine." You know, it's a woman well into her 90s. It only got down to 61 in my heat. So I just, I appreciate everybody who was involved with the construction projects, the businesses, and it hasn't been a perfect process, but everybody's worked together to make it happen. So again, I mirror the words of appreciation of all the staff and people involved in making it happen. Counselor Snapp, of course. Thank you.
Counselor Cullen.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to Tina Carey's comments about the HHDC losing three members last night through resignation. I think it's, it's, it's too bad, but it's an opportunity to put people on the committee that are not bid members. It's a concern that Ms. Carey and I share, that there's a skewed committee, it's not a, it's not a good optic, and it's, it is just an opportunity to fix that, so I hope we can take a look at that. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
I just want to speak briefly to the concerned citizens in Centerville. First of all, Mr. Robbins, you're not a Centerville complainer. As Mr. Tuttle said, the process was flawed, okay? Process is paramount, even if you happen to come out with a result that arguably is the right decision. And I'm not going to speak to the decision, because I wasn't on this council at the time. But as long as there is doubt as to process, the integrity of the solution is in question. And I'm sorry, because we can't put it back in the bottle. I don't like the idea of the town going out and making investments in property as a safe harbor. How many times are we going to do that? I can assure you, as long as I'm here, we're not going to be doing that, and we are going to work on process.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors? Counselor Daglada?
Yes, I wanted to also speak to Mrs. Carey's concern about the historic committee. That was a concern of mine as well. There seemed to be some issues at the time of just people working together and getting along. So, I'm really taken back that, you know, we had three people resign from that committee, and I'm hoping the committee will resolve whatever issues that they're having. And I don't want to speak to the issues, but it's important that when these committees come together, that they work together. And their advisory to the council, and it's not easy for people to come from different backgrounds, but it's important that those different backgrounds do come together, because they bring different things to the table. So, I'm thinking positive about this committee and hoping that it will turn around and move forward for the sake of this council and the sake of this town. As to Gerald Matting, who spoke about the Tractor Supply Company, he's not here right now. I just wanted him to know that this issue has come up. I had some concerns. My concerns are not so much about the business, it's the traffic in that area. That's a very, very busy area. I travel that area all the time. There are other similar businesses in the area, but perhaps, you know, it really needs to be looked at a little closely as to how the traffic flow is going to work and how all of these types of businesses can work near a community or near a residential area that's been impacted by that type of growth. So, I just wanted to let him know that, and also that, you know, I will be in touch with him as well, as I'm sure other councilors will. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor Chauncey?
I would like to say to Dr. Bo, Mr. Chu, the prince of Precinct Nine, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. I am humbled to receive your designation. Thank you.
Thank you. I would add to that, Mr. Chu, that thank you for sharing. It was not my intention to ask you not to speak. It was my intention for you to continue to express your speaking. This is the holiday season, and everybody gets excited about the trees and the decorations and presents for each other, but your sharing from yourself about what it means to have a house to be in, to live and be out of the cold, and caring about our brothers and sisters who have mental health issues, thank you for reminding us what the season is really all about. Thank you. I think I would be remiss if I didn't add this. It was just this week that I asked the town manager, can we, in fact, if we end up having to put the pump station at 310, can we... Because it's not a big... I don't know the exact size, but if we can put it in the back where nobody would even know it was there, that would be an option. So, I think that what I'm going to ask... Thank you for the conversation. Thank you for the input. Thank you for the sharing. And of course, we all live here. I don't care if you live in Craigville, or if you live in Hyannis, Centerville, we're all one community, and we have to come together in order to make this happen. So, I think what's important... I'm not an engineer, but what we know is it is more difficult and more expensive. So, when I ask the question about Mother's Park, it can be more difficult to impossible if the state does not give us permission. Number two, it will add to the cost. So, I think we all have to work together to look at what the final cost is and what the reality is and what we have to do, and so that we all share that, so that when we make that decision and somebody says, "How come you're over budget from what we've..." I would like to see a lot of millions come off of the whole project, but we have to work for that, and we have to look at alternative systems where it's not necessary to put pipes and pumps. But we have to, at one point, trust one another, or we get to what we have nationally of, "I'm not giving any ground, not giving any ground," and we end up, you know, 49-51 all the time. And so, I just want us to keep a spirit of that we all want the same thing, and that's the best for our community, and looking at, you know, the best information we can gather and see what our alternatives are. So, I can't answer the specifics. That would be more for the town manager and town engineering to do, but we certainly hear you, and we're with you. We're not against you. We are with you. Again, any other councilors? Like a motion to close public comment? Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, if we could have acting on the town manager's communications. Thank you.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. I always stand outside when the room's full, because I don't want to take a seat, so I usually stand right in the doorway. I can. Well, you see, Mr. Tuttle, you have to wait one moment. I'll... Thank you, sir. So, I was certainly prepared tonight to share with the council, which I had done through email correspondence, relative to the order of takings being signed for both 1456 Falmouth Road and 310 Main Street, Centerville, and that the legal department was proceeding with the necessary steps to complete that process. Perhaps more importantly at this point is discussing the commitment to looking at Mother's Park relative to a potential site for a future pump station. I had many emails, calls, texts over the last several weeks. Thank you all who participated. Dan Santos and I and other staff are often out in our community talking about many issues. Certainly wastewater is one that I've spent a tremendous amount of time on, and I would genuinely ask that our citizens continue to engage to this level. This is not viewed as a negative. We talk about... We just talked about it at the Centerville Civic Association this summer and this sub-area, and it just doesn't grab the attention until we get to this level of action. The last time we discussed a pump station to coincide with the Woolquocket Lake Long Pond area, we had citizens come out and basically say that that was not the place decided. I spoke with former President Jerragodis today, who vividly remembers. It coincided with that 2003 report that came out relevant to a preliminary design and the discussion of it. When we begin to look in these sub-areas, we're going to be looking to put in gravity sewers. They're the tried and true way when you have to do a sewer. We're going to be looking at the low points in the roads. We always look for where municipal property exists. So, Mother's Park is absolutely still on the books. This particular property at 310 was a low point in the roadway, and it was for sale, and it lent itself for this consideration and making it an option for us in the future. Now, let me share with you why Mother's Park is a challenge. It just isn't that, because I think citing a pump station anywhere will come with challenges. Mother's Park was bequested to the town and was accepted by the town in 1927. We would need to review the terms of that bequest first. At this point, I do not believe we have the will of the individual that has been reviewed by legal. We are in the process of doing that. If after such a review, we determine that we can move forward, we would need to comply with Article 97 of the Amendments of the State Constitution, because Mother's Park is a park and falls within the protection of Article 97, and a change in use of parkland requires that compliance. Now, for us, that means that we would go to conservation, and we would have to receive a two-thirds vote, or a majority vote, I believe, at conservation. I'll have to confirm that with legal. Unanimous, thank you. A unanimous vote from conservation. Then it would come back to town council, and we would ask town council if we can proceed to the state legislature, because town council is who will allow me to go to the state legislature. If we achieved that, then we would go to the House and the Senate, and it requires a two-thirds vote of each to allow us to cite a pump station at that location. In that process, I do not know yet, and it's under evaluation, whether some form of interaction with MIPA would be required. We would have to... I'm assuming we would have to replicate any lands that were no longer parked with lands of equal land value. It's not necessarily monetary value. It is parkland. So, we would need to identify that as well. We are doing this. We began this immediately. We will continue to work on it. I asked Mr. Tuttle to stay, because I know that he's offered his assistance in this, and genuinely, we are going to need it if the village of Centerville wants to see Mother's Park seriously considered. So, thank you for that. I'd also have a little call to action that our town council, and I believe I'll probably meet next week with our new leadership, whomever that is, to reconfirm a commitment to spend the next year developing a fiscal policy relevant to how all of this will be funded. And that will be as challenging an effort of a discussion with our residents as citing a pump station. So, I'd ask you, please stay involved. Please stay engaged. We will do our best. Dan Santos, the Director of Public Works, Dan Santos and I met this morning, actually, to talk about how to improve our public involvement process. From my observation, though, over and over and over again, until... This is somewhat unique, because until you send a bill, not a lot of people come out and sit down and roll up their sleeves and want to have a detailed discussion about this. You know, you've kind of changed that for us, and thank you. So, we're going to proceed with Mother's Park. I also have a lot of concern about the use of the property as it remains municipal. I'm not big on... We're not looking to accumulate properties. Our intent is if this isn't used, we'll go through a disposition... I'd have to come... No, actually, I can proceed with the disposition process, but I can't sell the property. And as your town manager, I can't sell the property until the town council approves that. So, obviously, going into that sort of effort, I would be working with our leadership to make sure that they agree that it should be disposed of, but our intent would be to put it back to the market as a residential property. There is a little bit of misinformation flying around out there. The intent was never to wreck, tear down the home. In fact, there's a pretty good chance it's a very small pump station, that it may go subsurface out front in the lawn if we did have to exercise that option. So, there's a little bit of, you know... It's not exactly accurate, some of the communications that have been out there. We did get into discussions about, "Could you put it in a house and keep it looking like a house or a garage?" And our answer was, "Yeah, you can do that, and there's actually plenty of examples out there." But that really probably isn't what would occur, so there isn't an intent to tear down that nice little Cape Cod-style home there. We will work with our neighborhood as we go forward with an interim use. My feeling is it should be occupied. We certainly don't want to occupy it in a scenario that is problematic. So, we'd work with our councilor, certainly, our full council, but we would want to manage that so that it remains the quaint little property, residential property that it is, until we make a final decision on this. There's also several other steps before any further action takes place. We don't have construction money. We would need to come back to you with the request design funds, and then we would have to come back to you and request construction funds. You would have to approve that, and then we could proceed with this. So, there will be many other opportunities for discussion. I've outlined how we expect to proceed relevant to the Article 97 disposition at Mother's Park. Personally, I think we should continue to look at any and all available parcels in the area, because as we go forward with this sewer expansion, we will be needing those options for consideration. But it wasn't just, "Well, we can move with Mother's Park, and why would you do anything else?" If that were the case, that's what we would have done. And that was the discussions that we had with council leadership relevant to moving forward with 310 Main Street. So, thank you. I just wanted you to stay and hear that.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We did have a couple of questions about the West Main Street pump station, if I could still go, you know. So, little history on this. So, gravity, as I said earlier, is definitely a way you want to go with sewers if you can do it. So, our system was really designed so that the whole system drained down here to the South Street pump station. So, probably 15 years ago, maybe longer, as we looked at the line that came from all the way up the west end of West Main Street, all the way down to South Street, we had found, and I want to say in the 2000s, not the... I don't know if we looked at it in the 90s and saw surcharging in that line, especially when we got down to South Street. So, we began a design, and we began a design that started to say, "Hey, you can't have all that flow. It's not going to work. The line is going to be problematic." So, we put a pump station over by the west end, and then we had a planned pump station just south of Lincoln Road. And we had done that bypass on the west end when we got a grant from the state. We got $2 million, I think, to run that straight to the plant. So, now it's not going down South Street to the South Street pump station. We put in a pump, and we forced it right back up to the plant. Same exact project at the end, on West Main Street at the end of Lincoln Road. At that point, that was 2009, we got ARIFunds to subsidize... Bless you. To subsidize that project. And that money isn't coming from taxpayers' dollars. It's actually coming from our reserve. It was one of the first uses, I believe, of the reserve that we created to pay for water and sewer from Hotel Motel, I believe, and that's how we were paying for that. We also use rates when we're running that. That went live after construction. That's been pumping wastewater up to the wastewater treatment plant. It was designed... It is a major treatment plant. The plans really haven't significantly changed. That's going to service a tremendous amount of wastewater that's coming from the west down that line. But rather than continuing to South Street, it now goes up Lincoln Road, goes right down 28, and ties into our wastewater treatment plant. So, that's active, and it has been. That's all I have for wastewater right now. We are proceeding with the tasks in the updated budget action calendar for FY 2021 is scheduled. The proposed calendar year fee hearing was held on November 12, 2019. The proposed fees have been posted on the town's website homepage under "In the News" section as proposed fee hearing notice. As stated on November 21, pending any further comment, I would approve the fees as I proposed. I approved the fees on December 2, 2019. So, I said at that meeting, pending any further comment, I would approve them. I received no further comment, and then on December 2, I approved the fees. And those will be posted as... And those will be posted as approved. The Town Council received a presentation on the tax levy shifting options for setting the FY 2020 tax rate on November 21, 2019. Later this evening, the Town Council will consider orders that include a decision on the percentage for residential exemption, which can be a range of 0% to 35%, and whether or not to split the tax rate between the residential and commercial classes of property. We've had a 20% residential exemption in place since 2006, and the council has elected not to split the tax rate since 2007. Director Milne will be up later in your agenda to speak to that. Our Department of Public Works continues their effort of public water supply well rehabilitation at the Mary Dunn Four Well Site, and the installation of test wells on numerous sites across Barnstable, including the Fish and Wildlife property, immediately abutting the Hyannis Water System. We hope to complete these efforts by the spring of 2020, and will continue to provide reports on our progress and findings relevant to this effort. I spoke to you about my, oh, just apology, I've gone completely, no paper version of this any longer, except the one I read from. So, yes, it was at the request of the council. So, I'll be, you'll be getting it electronically, usually the day of the council meeting. And just, that's why I didn't hand out any paper copies. I don't know if you have paper copies, but if something Cynthia did. But I was requested that, so I've done that. Massachusetts General Laws requires the Department of Environmental Protection to develop and maintain a comprehensive statewide master plan for solid waste management, which the agency updated on a 10-year planning cycle. And on September 27, DEP issued their draft 2030 Solid Waste Master Plan for public comment. Give you the link to it there. SDEP will accept public comments through Friday, December 6. Our staff attended the DEP Southeast Regional Office Public Hearing on November 19, and plans to submit comments on the draft plan tomorrow. We'll provide you with those comments. I will say to you, though, that the issues that we're confronted with, with recycling and solid waste disposal, are not addressed in this master plan. And they are more very broad goals that we would like to see happen relevant to the reduction of waste. That's wonderful. You need to have those goals. But, we also need to live day to day and provide service to our residents. So, I think in our comments, you will see that our director and solid waste division head point that out. So, we want to be supportive of those overall goals, but we also need to be able to get rid of solid waste in a cost-effective and environmentally sensitive manner, today, tomorrow, and for the next five or 10 years. So, I'll just preempt what I'm going to forward to you with that. Over the past few days, Barnstable Natural Resources staff and volunteers have rescued 67 turtles. And I told you the types of turtles from, shared with me from our staff. The wind's been strong out of the northeast, which has been blowing them onto Sandy Neck and into Barnstable Harbor. Most of the rescued turtles have been alive and in good shape. I want to thank our natural resources staff and volunteers on their efforts. I would like to remind the public that it's important to recover these stranded turtles as quickly as possible. Please assume the turtle, if encountered, is alive. Turtles often appear lifeless due to the environmental conditions. If you come across a stranded sea turtle on the beach, please follow the simple steps. Move the turtle above the high tide line. Never grab or hold the turtle by the head or its flippers. You probably all know that. Cover it with dry seaweed or rack. Mark it with an obvious piece of debris, buoy, driftwood, or branches. Call the Wellfleet Bay Wildlife Sanctuary hotline at 508-349-2615, and extension 6104. You can reach out to our DNR staff, too, but this will get immediate response. And sea turtles are federally protected under the Endangered Species Act, so it's illegal to harass them or transport them without a permit. So just know that. Don't take them home. Be careful with them, but many of them don't look like they're alive when you find them, but there's a good chance they still are. So please let us know, or I've given you the direct contact. And we see this occur, you know, here fairly regularly now. On July 2, and again on August 27, we sent letters to the Secretary of Executive Office of Administration and Finance regarding state bond bill where we requested $1.6 million in funding for the improvement of the Armory. On October 16, I met at the State House with Rep. Crocker and Senator Seer and staff from the Administration and Finance requesting the release of the funds. On November 20 and December 3, I discussed the status of this with Senator Seer's office. On December 4, I reached out to Lieutenant Governor's office for assistance on the matter. I have been back and forth in contact with Lieutenant Governor's office. We're right at the end of completing the hazmat cleanup at the Armory and preparing bid documents to proceed with additional improvements at that facility. And I'd really like an answer on this. I continue to, I don't like to go top-down, but we're reaching a point, I've said before, where we're really looking for an answer, whether these funds or some form of funding will be there in support of us going forward with this very important capital improvement project. On December 4, 2019, I received communication from our legal department that the school committee voted to declare that the former Ktuit Elementary School is no longer being used for educational purposes and shall revert back to the custody and control of the town. I immediately communicated with our property manager and public works director to investigate the status of the building and to secure the building, as it is now a municipal asset. We have retained an architect to conduct a preliminary assessment commencing next week. Once we understand the condition of the building, we plan to bring forward recommendations on the next step, which will include close coordination with our Town Council and the Village of Ktuit to assure appropriate use of this asset. On November 27, 2019, the town manager held a public hearing on proposed changes to amend the town Barnstable Shellfish, Eel, Herring, and Aquaculture Rules and Regulations. Prior to that, on October 16 of 2019, the Shellfish Committee voted unanimously in favor of the proposed changes. On December 4, 2019, the town manager approved the proposed changes to the rules and regs. And I've included a copy of those so that you can view them. It primarily allows for a modification of the timeframes when shellfish beds are open. Prior to that, it would have a set date in the regulations, which didn't make a lot of sense. So it was a relatively minor, but certainly, from an administrative standpoint, an important modification. Thank you. That concludes my town manager's report.
Thank you very much, Manager Mills. I would, you know, respond to manager's comments.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying everything about 310 Main Street, the town's intent. I think that the misinformation is a great concern, and it jins up a lot of false concerns. But I really appreciate that not only did you say it on television, but it's accessible on our website. I just want to point that out, that everybody who came to speak about 310 Main Street or is concerned about the fact that there might be a pump station in their neighborhood or vicinity can go back and look at that and see what has really gone on. And I wanted to say that I really felt the loss of Counselor Crocker tonight when the question came up about the West Main pump station, because I could see him, like, just sitting there twisting in his seat, knowing the exact date it was done, and the reason it was done, and everything else. And we're kind of at a loss, so we're going to wrap you in bubble wrap every night, so we're sure that you're safe with your knowledge. But I wanted to thank you for clarifying all that, because it's important that we have one truth, one message that comes from the town. So, thank you.
Counselor Beedenbender.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. A comment and then just a question. So my comment is regarding the turtles. I know you're fostering a baby in your office. It's very kind of you. I'm kind of jealous. What's her name, his name? Did you name her, him?
Turtle.
Turtle. That's very sweet.
I'm not very creative.
You know, Mark Ells told me once that he's where funny goes to die, and it might be true.
No, it's good. You shouldn't get attached to the wildlife, because it needs to go back to the wild. So, in the conservation field, you're doing exactly what you should be. I have a very fond memory of a number of years ago, it was about four, five years ago, when I was working for the International Fund for Animal Welfare, and we had a massive stranding of Kemp's ridleys, which is a highly endangered species, and there were over 800 Kemp's ridleys. And I worked with a group of people through IFAW and the Coast Guard to airlift all of those babies to Florida, and it was really quite incredible. And the Wellfleet Bay Sanctuary did an amazing job, NMLC as well. So, thank you for bringing that up, because it's important for people to know, this is the time of year when our marine mammals get stranded. Out on the Lower Cape, it's pinnipeds and dolphins and what have you. So, you know, be aware of the wildlife, keep your puppies away from them as well, and respect them. I wanted to ask you about the trash. I was at a meeting last night, and I had a constituent ask me about the Rochester facility, that there were, that there were other towns that were effectively able to recycle, and it was going to the Rochester facility. And I couldn't, I couldn't respond. I didn't know the answer to that, or the circumstances of that. I said, you know, I am quite confident that our town has, you know, done their due diligence on that, and there's a reason why we're not headed to Rochester, but I wanted to ask you.
You mean the Covanta facility?
They said Rochester.
There's a couple of, I think there may be a couple of different facilities that are there, so I'm not quite sure. We look at the marketplace relevant to recycled products, and we are not bound to one entity relevant to that. So whatever the market will provide us, we have that opportunity. It's our solid waste that we have a longer, and another challenge that we'll be briefing you on once we receive clarification. Solid waste disposal is another challenge that's going on.
Right. The implication was that other, there are like, there were three other towns that they mentioned that were able to somehow successfully find a home for their recycled goods?
I mean, in the market, if you're willing to pay, then probably. I mean, you know, you also kind of have to police, well, what are they doing with it once they receive it? I can tell you it's recycled, but if we know there's no market for a particular type of recycled product, but there are markets for others. You know, clean cardboard and, you know, others, there are. I'd have to go through the list right now and see what's what, but.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thank you.
Would you like a summary from Director Santos?
I would love that.
At next meeting or a first meeting in January?
That would be great.
I'll bring that to leadership, and we'll get it on an agenda.
Thank you.
We'll get you, we'll get your briefing. Okay?
Counselor Rep. Gressi.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Thank you, Mark, for the report. One question, did you get a permit to move that turtle?
Me? Mine?
Me?
DNR brought the turtle to my office.
Okay. All right. Okay. No.
I can have Amy Crotto vouch for this.
Okay. Of course, I'm disappointed, but I'm happy about the Ktuit School. I'm also a little encouraged when I see that Stratford Capital won the bid at the Sandwich School, and the collaborative will be looking for a new home. So, I hope that that's part of the discussion going forward, perhaps putting the collaborative in the school. And I know, I know you've opened your doors to the village residents to be a part of the discussion.
From my standpoint, right now, my first priority will be to understand the status of that asset. I need to, before we put, I've had many people reach out to me to want to, you know, would you consider this, that, or the other thing? I want to know what condition the building's in, and what costs will incur, both, you know, capital and operating. And then sit down, you know, with the council and the village and say, okay, here's where we're at. What do you want to do with this asset? Because there's both, the building and grounds, and the grounds is certainly a very important open space in that village. So we really need to think through this.
13 acres, absolutely. And it also sits atop or upgrading of a significant well in that area, too. The other one, you were talking about the process of Mother's Park, and so we need a unanimous vote from Conservation. Do we need simple majority in Town Council? Two-thirds? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Snep.
Thank you, Mark, for the report, and I can't thank you enough for getting this as an electronic document a couple hours before the meeting, so that there's a chance to at least review it before your presentation. I just had a kind of a follow-up on the Ktuit School. Those of us in Marson's Mills have had a shuttered school for a number of years now, and I know it's been fits and starts on, you know, its reuse, and I'm hoping that some of the efforts on housing will kind of move that along in the future. But a more short-term concern is that we have approved in our capital plan the removal of the temporary buildings, and if you could just provide a status report on when that's going to occur, that would be appreciated.
I know Director Santos is here. I don't know if he knows off the top of his head.
Not off the top of my head. Well, the answer is, in the next couple of months, we're just doing the design now, hazardous waste removal, and then we'll remove those.
So you're talking about the portable units. They got to go in and remove the hazardous materials in there, and then they're looking to demo them this spring, Dan?
Yes.
This spring.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Dagwan, please.
Yes, thank you, Town Manager Ells. Thank you for the update on the release of state funds for the Armory. You know, that's one of our really, really important historical assets here in the town, and so many things have come up in terms of what we're going to do with that building. So, I'm a little disappointed that they haven't, you know, I know you are, too. You've been doing this for, working on this for quite a while, and so many things have been proposed for that Armory. So I'm hoping that in the new year, we'll get a definitive answer, and the funds will come through. So thank you for continuing to update us on that.
Mark, two things. Can we make sure that the press knows how to get this information from the online, so that they have the same information? Because this really spells out what you're working on and.
Lynn Poyana includes it in the Town Manager's newsletter on Friday, verbatim. I send it to her electronically.
Excellent. Thank you. And then, next, next Friday, not tomorrow, on the 13th, at 7:00 a.m., the Cape Cod and Island Selectmen's Councilors Association will be meeting at the Upper Cape, that's in Bourne, at 7:00 a.m. And the topic is on the solid waste. All the communities on the Cape are all into this, and so we have to work regionally in order to make a difference for that. So, we all get that information from good administrators, so everybody can get at that. But there's always a couple of seats welcome, so if yourself or Dan or anybody of your staff would like to attend that.
Yeah, myself or Director Santos will be there.
That's awesome.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Going to ask Counselor Steinhebert to please act on the minutes.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. I'd like to move that we approve the meeting minutes of November 21, 2019, as written.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay, so now we'd like to do communications from elected officials, boards, committees, staff commission reports, correspondence, and announcements. Okay, we're going to start with Counselor Beedenbender, please.
Thank you again. Light and fluffy first, this Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00, Center This Sunday from 3:00 to 6:00, Centerville Main Street is the Centerville Stroll. It is always beautifully lit up. There is music, great food, there's ice sculpting, caroling, and a lot of other surprises planned as well. So I encourage everyone to go. It's a great family event. On a more serious side, particularly for the folks that are watching, I just want to remind everyone that this is hunting season and deer hunting with shotguns started this week. If you're in the conservation lands, make sure that you have a nice vest. And if you have dogs, make sure they have colored vests as well. There is no hunting on Sunday, so that's a free day for you. But just be wary that there are hunters in the woods. I also wanted to mention, and again, this is particularly, the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I'm the liaison to CPC and we get so many requests for preservation funds for historic buildings. And a lot of the buildings that are coming up for consideration are in really rough shape. And there are a number of buildings where it's sort of an ongoing maintenance thing as well. And I received this email today. MHC, the Massachusetts Historical Commission announces round 26 of the Massachusetts Preservation Projects Fund grant program. And it's anticipated that the range of the grant round will be somewhere around $800,000. It's administered by MHC and it's a state-funded, 50% reimbursable matching grant program. And so it's meant for the preservation of properties, landscapes, and sites listed in the State Register of Historic Places. There are going to be a series of workshops held around the state. There's going to be one in Sandwich on February 11th. The first, the round, the proposals are due on March 20th, 2020. So just wanted to throw that out there for some of our historic buildings. If you're in need of preservation, there's some funding out there that's available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Levick.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Just a reminder, I mentioned at last meeting that the Marston's Mills Village Stroll is introducing the new and improved Marston's Mills Village will be this Saturday. It is from 3:00 o'clock to 5:30 p.m. And you can still go to that and still make it to the boat parade here in Hyannis. So I just wanted to mention that. And just to throw it in there, this is a, you know, I think I'd be remiss, this is something that's on my mind constantly, is that this is sometimes a very difficult time for our citizens and sometimes elderly and people who are by themselves in the holiday season. Let's just all try to remember that and check in on our neighbors and think about, just try to take that extra step to think about those who are around us who may not be able to enjoy the holiday season as much as the rest of us. Thank you.
Counselor Rapresi.
Thank you. I want to announce that the Ktuit-Santuut Civic Association is hosting their Christmas in Ktuit this Saturday, December 7th. And it starts at 9:00 at the Ktuit Center for the Arts. They hold a craft market. And then Freedom Hall from 10:00 to 4:00 holds Arts and Crafts Festival. The Historical Society has a craft project for children. And the Ktuit Kettleer Store is open. The Kahoon Museum has free admission. And Bruce Hall has the Small Works Art Show in sale. And the Ktuit Women's Fellowship has gift baskets for sale at Bruce Hall. And the Ktuit Fresh Market is open for tastings. The fire station opens, offers chili. And there's horse-drawn carriages and face painting at the Kettle Ho and magic show at the library. And then Santa arrives by boat, fingers crossed the weather is favorable. He comes to the town dock at 3:45 and then everybody parades up to the Ktuit Village Green to light the Christmas tree. And then Santa's there to hear all the wishes of the little ones. And it ends up at Bruce Hall with cookies made by all the community, cookies and hot chocolate and cider. So I hope everybody can come out and enjoy that. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that a good portion of the funds to put this together are generated in the summertime in August by the Ktuit Bass and Bluefish Tournament. And they just recently gave the, or presented a check for $10,000, or yes, $10,000 to the Ktuit Civic Association to help contribute to this event as well as the July 4th parade. Thank you.
Counselor Dagwan.
Yes, I just wanted to also announce that, December the 7th, the Hyannis Main Street Stroll will occur and the Harbor Boat Parade will also be again this year. Last year, we had some 14 boats that were decorated and it was really nice to see how many residents kept their boats in the water and took the time to decorate them. Santa will be there along with myself to help judge those boats this year. And we also would ask citizens who are coming to the stroll and to the boat parade to watch for the free Hyannis Open Street Trolley at the Christmas Stroll on December the 7th. Take a ride from Motion Street to C Street for all the sights. Then roll down South Street for a stop at Town's Overlook Park. Starting at 3:00 p.m., the shuttle will start making loops down to the harbor at Bismarck Park for the Greater Hyannis Civic Association Santa Boat Parade. So come out and enjoy that day with us in Hyannis.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counselor Ogun.
I must admit, I was a little surprised that Counselor Levick and Counselor Beedenbender forgot the Rolling Red Rally last week in Hyannis. Yeah.
The counselor needs to say something.
I am. And I commend, I think it's Kathy Demas who put that together. And Counselor Beedenbender, Levick and I were riding atop the fire truck right behind the SWAT vehicle. Counselor Dagwan got the convertible, so I'm not sure who got the better deal after that. But I think people were really impressed and thrilled with the effort that was put in. It was a nice little event, so I commend her for that. As I mentioned last time, the Osterville Village Stroll is tomorrow evening. Starts around 5:00 o'clock in earnest, goes throughout the evening. There are some further events on Saturday, including the dog parade, that I think Cindy Cotton of the library takes care of. Finally, on a more serious note, I did attend the Osterville Village Association meeting on Tuesday. And what was interesting was that John Crowe, who is president of the association, had an agenda item for short-term rentals. And the passion and the length of discussion that occurred was very surprising. So we look forward to the results of the Short Term Rental Committee and look forward to working with them to bring that to fruition.
Any other counselors? Counselor Dagwan.
Yeah, I ended up riding in the limousine because I was the very first person, first counselor at the rally. And no counselors were there. So Patty said, who was the grand marshal, said, Dad, get in the car with me, you know, so you can ride. So that's how I ended up in the convertible.
Any other counselors? Okay. So we've been here now for two hours and some people on the dais can get up and just, disappear, get a glass of water, go to the bathroom, and come back. But there are some people here that don't get to do that. And so Madam Clerk for one, the Chair for another, anybody who's assisting the Chair. And then there's always this concern, gee, if I walk out now, and it's embarrassing because it looks like we weren't being well entertained or informed by somebody and they're speaking and we're disappearing. So by right, the Chair can ask at any time for recess of 10 minutes. If you take, if I give you 10 minutes, you won't be back here for 12. So what we're going to do is go take a five-minute recess and I'm going to ask all of us to come back within six minutes. Okay. We need to come back to our seat. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. We got a lot done in that six minutes, so this is really good. Okay. Thank you. Good. So we have an announcement regarding item number 2020-029, expansion of a ground-mounted solar district. And Counselor Beedenbender, if you could take that. Thanks.
I've been informed in writing, oh, sorry, for the record, this is announcement regarding item 2020-029. I have been informed in writing by Attorney Michael Ford that the proponent developer of a ground-mounted solar project that is the subject of Council Item 2020-029 has requested withdrawal of the proposed zoning amendment from consideration. In light of that correspondence, this matter will be on the council agenda on December 19th solely for the purpose of approving the request to withdraw item 2020-029. In addition, I also announced that I am withdrawing my sponsorship of this item before the council.
Thank you, Counselor Beedenbender. And I apologize, I did not know that people in the audience waiting for this item, we would have taken it before our six-minute break. So thank you so much.
I was waiting for it.
Okay. Merry Christmas. Okay. So we're ready to do orders of the day, starting with old business. And if Counselor Neary could take item number 2020-060.
It'd be my pleasure, Mr. Chair. Let's see here. This is item number 2020-060. And let's go to the first page here. It's a public hearing. It opened up a public hearing and will require a roll call majority vote. It's an appropriation order in the amount of $730,000 for the Water Enterprise Fund fiscal year 2020 operating budget, as written.
Thank you. Okay. Dan Santos is going to present us with the rationale.
Good evening, counselors.
Good evening, councilors. Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. In 2015, the Environmental Protection Agency mandated testing of the Hyannis Water System for contaminants of emerging concern identified the presence of perfluorinated compounds in the Straitway and Mary Dunwell Fields. They're also known as PFAS. So, you'll hear these interchangeably. On May 19th, 2016, the EPA announced the final federal health advisory for perfluorinated compounds in drinking water. The new advisory level was significantly lower than their earlier provisional level. On June 12th, 2018, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection issued an Office of Research and Standards guideline for drinking water of 70 parts per trillion. For those of you into science, that's 10 to the minus ninth. So, it's a very small quantities we're talking about here. As a result of the last Mass DEP announcement of the Hyannis Water System did initiate multiple rounds of water sampling and adjusted the well sequencing. To be able to deliver enough drinking water year-round under the proposed new standard, the volume of water purchased from the town of Yarmouth and the Center for Losterville-Marstens Mills water system had to be increased. At the present time, the sources of all the CEC contaminants, or the contaminants of emerging concern, have not been completely determined. The DEP has directed in its overseeing investigations at the Barnstable Municipal Airport, as well as the Barnstable County Fire Training Academy, to better identify the sources and potentially responsible parties. When the fiscal year 2020 operating budget was prepared a year ago, it was not anticipated that the Hyannis Water System would have to significantly increase water purchases based on the above-described situation. Consequently, additional operating funds are required to purchase water from the town of Yarmouth and the COMM Water Department. The Hyannis Water Board at their regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, voted unanimously to support this funding request. Funding for this appropriation will be provided from the Water Enterprise Fund reserves, which were recently certified at $1.274 million. The Department of Public Works Water Supply Division is currently designing interim filtration units for the airport, Straitway, Simmons Pond, and Ahannis Port wells, and is constructing the MAR filtration plant. The plant is anticipated to be operational in the fall of 2020, and at that time would eliminate the water purchased from the town of Yarmouth and COMM Water Department. The fiscal year '21 operating budget will be reduced accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions and discussions from the councilors? Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing first. Anyone here for a public comment?
There's an MIT dropout seven times. I think that trillion is 10 to the minus 12, not 10 to the minus ninth.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
He's a doctor. I was schooled by Dr. Boe. I was trying to be conservative.
Okay, thank you. Counselor's response. Can we close the public hearing? Make a motion?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. So moved. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Counselor's response or comments? Counselor Rapp, Chris, Rappusetti?
Grissette. It rhymes with spaghetti. How much is being expended for the purchase of water from Yarmouth and Com now? It's a little concerning that the reserves are going to be depleted to probably under a half a million with this expenditure.
That's correct.
So, how much are we expending it?
It's about a million dollars a year.
A million a year. So, fingers crossed, the treatment plant gets up and running in 2020, so we'll be able to start banking on those reserves. So...
Yes.
Are you concerned, Mr. Kaiser? Yes, okay.
Construction is going well, all on schedule, so hopefully that will continue.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cullum.
Yes, what are other towns' reaction to this? Are they, I'm just, like statewide, is this happening where people are buying water from other districts, and is it a similar charge? Do we look at that as kind of like a guide?
There are a number of towns that have been affected by the CECs or the PFAS and their water supply. And there's, every town is different in that some of them have a lot of excess wells, so they can turn some off and have, still have capacity, but it's still concerning, and they have to address the fact that it is in their water supply. Unfortunately, we, because this has just been an onslaught year after year, we don't have that excess capacity here, which we would like to have. For example, COMM and Yarmouth, they do have excess capacity, and plus the fact that they don't have the CEC, the contaminants in their water supply. Fortunately, they're neighbors that can help us out. But it's going to become more of a problem every month, every year that goes by, and they're continuing to add different contaminants to these lists and starting to sample for them. So, what it means is ultimately, there will be very few, if any, water supplies that don't have full treatment on them in the future.
Counselor Snapp.
A related question. Have the water purveyor meetings been going well? It seems like, in my mind, this is becoming a town-wide problem, even though we've been looking at this district by district.
Yes, we've been meeting monthly, and we've been spending a number of months just getting everyone up to speed, where each water district is, where the town is. Our last meeting was an important one several weeks ago, where we talked about the need for disposal sites and what we're facing with our wastewater plan for identifying disposal sites, because we are limited at our current disposal site, and how that's going to integrate with all the needs for water supply. So, everyone's understanding the issue, and I think moving ahead now, we'll start talking about, you know, how we'll coordinate those efforts. And my goal is that all the districts and the town, you know, come to an agreement on, you know, where effluent disposal will be in town, where water supply will be, and start getting into some agreements for sharing, not only information, but of sharing infrastructure, that something that's on the table. No decision yet, of course, but that's where we'd like to see this all going, is that it is one town, and these resources we all share.
Any other councilors? Okay. Second? First? Second? Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, so, Madam, Madam Clerk, this is a roll call? Thank you.
Counselors, Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Would Counselor Levesque, I'm sorry, Counselor Snapp, please read item number 2020-061.
Yes, I will. This is an item, Old Business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call vote. Item 2020-061, allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2020 residential exemption.
Mr. Mark Millen, please.
Good evening, councilors. Mark Millen, Director of Finance, Town of Barnstable. Two tax levy shifting options before you tonight, the two we vote on every single year at this time of year. The first one before you is the residential exemption and whether or not to continue it, and if so, at what percentage. We've had a 20% residential exemption in place for the past 20 years. And if you recall from the presentation we gave a couple of weeks ago, this slide illustrates an example of how the residential impact, residential exemption impacts various property values. And because of the type of exemption, the way the exemption works, you'll see that the value of the exemption diminishes as the value of the property grows. And so, the difference between the blue bar and the orange bar shows what the property tax bill would be at these different valuations without an exemption and a qualifying property receiving the exemption. And at the breakeven point of $1,134,000, a property valued at that would pay the same amount of tax if we had no exemption or a 20% residential exemption. That's a little bit higher than the previous year, because property values overall have gone up. And so, what's before you tonight is a, is a request to, or for your consideration, if you want to continue the 20% residential exemption, that's, it's just a yes or no. If you wanted to modify it, just every 1% change in the residential exemption will essentially change the tax bill for a median property homeowner, which is $376,000, about $35. And so, you can go anywhere from 0 to 35%. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this is open for a public hearing, so it can open, public hearing, anyone who would like to speak to this item. Seeing no one, can we have a vote to close public comment? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Counselors, comments? Counselor Rap Grissette.
Thank you. Does the Board of Assessors ever weigh in on this issue?
They did the initial year that it was brought forward, and since then, no, because it's a tax policy decision, and they felt that that policy decision resided with the council.
Okay.
But their initial recommendation way back in 2006 was not to implement a residential exemption.
Thank you.
Counselor Bogan.
Mark, and you may not be able to answer this, because you said it is a policy decision. You indicated that the value of the exemption diminishes as the value of the property goes up. What, beyond that, what's the rationale for implementing the potential 20% exemption?
Well, the rationale back when it was originally implemented was, at that time, there was a significant increase in residential property values and nothing in commercial and industrial property values. So, all of the increase in the tax levy was getting shifted to the residential class of property, and the council at that point in time wanted to try to mitigate some of the impact to the residential property owners. And the only way they could do that with the residential exemption was to shift it, well, to shift it with the residential exemption moved some of that impact to the primary homeowners in town, to the second homeowners in town. Because at the same time, second homeowners were coming in, buying up properties, driving up the values of the residential properties in town, and that was another reason that they decided to do it.
And, and I think you answered my, my second question, which is also in the materials, which is that by doing this, it doesn't adversely affect the commercial or industrial sector.
It does not. Thank you.
Any other councilors? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, so, we're going to do this again by a roll call, and this is on item 2020-061, allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2020 residential exemption.
Counselors, Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. Counselor Levesque, could you please read into, for us, item number 2020-062?
Yes, thank you, Counsel Hebert. This is Old Business Public Hearing, Roll Call Vote. This is item number 2020-062, allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2020. This is about the tax factor, as written. Thank you, Counselor. Again, just the, I won't go over the whole presentation we gave you a couple of weeks ago. I just wanted to put this table up on, on the screen to show you the impact of changing, moving from a factor of one. We've been a factor of one for, since 2007. If we were going to shift some of the tax levy from the residential class to the commercial and industrial personal property class, this mechanism gives you the choice to do that. And this illustrates how much tax levy would be shifted at different increments. Every .05 increment in the shift adds 700, or shifts $730,000 approximately from the residential class to the CIP class. And an example of what that looks like for a median homeowner at those different shift levels, you can see that the blue line, which represents the residential tax bill, there's very little savings to a residential taxpayer as a result of the shift, while there's a very significant impact to the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. And that's because we're 90% residential in valuation. And so, every $1 in savings for a residential property is going to cost a commercial and industrial property $9 more in taxes. So, I think that's the reason why the council has not adopted this for several years now, is because of the impact to the commercial class.
Thank you, Mr. Millen. This is a public hearing, open to the public. Anyone want to speak to this issue? Seeing none, as for motion that we close the public hearing? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, councilors, questions? Senator, Counsel Stein Hilber, I'm sorry.
Senator, that was a long time.
Yeah, there we go.
Mark, just for clarification purposes, can you just reiterate what a yes vote is on this item?
Yes, a yes vote on this will keep us at a factor of one, and we will not be splitting the tax rate.
Counselor Bogan, please.
Not, not so much a question, but a comment. Your presentation two weeks ago was extensive and comprehensive and impressive. I thank you for that, and I thank you for the abbreviated version this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other councilors? Shall we move the question? Second? Thank you. All in favor, moving the question? Thank you very much. This is a roll call, and again, this is item number 2020-062, allocation of tax levy fiscal year 2020 tax factor.
Counselors, Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Levesque?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
And Bogan?
Yes.
That's thirteen yes.
Counselors, just so you know, I'm going to pass around the tax factor sheet for all of you to sign, because he has to get it to the DOR by midnight.
All right. Okay, we can do that. All right, while that's going around, I'm going to ask Counselor Cullum, could, could you read in 2020-0, 063?
Yes, this is item 2020-063, order to approve term of contract change under Mass General Law 30B Uniform Procurement Act, Section 12, Paragraph B, which would allow the Real Estate Research Consultants Incorporated contract to be extended from three years to five years. This may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Thank you, Mr. Millen.
Thank you, Mark Millen, Director of Finance. Again, this, and what we're asking for is your permission here to enter into a five-year contract. Procurement laws limit us to entering into three-year contracts. If we want to go beyond three years, we need the council's approval to go to a five-year contract. So, that's what we're seeking here tonight with this item. We're looking to lock in a fixed price for this contract. It coincides with the revaluation that we have to do once every five years, and this will give us budget predictability as well. And so, we ask for your permission to enter into the five-year contract.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Any counselors, comments? Counselor Neary.
Mark, thank you. This, I assume this starts now, so the year one starts now, and do we revalue every five years? Five years, is that the...
So, we'll be on, we'll be synced in terms of schedule with that. And obviously, you've vetted, I think you presented something to us last week, we will actually realize some savings over time with a locked-in contract at a longer term. Thank you.
Moving along. Thank you. Any other counselors? Shall we move the question?
So moved.
All in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, so this is a majority vote. So, again, this is for item, item number 2020-063, order to approve a term of contract change for personal property valuation update services in the town of Barnstable, Massachusetts for fiscal year 2021 through 2024. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? That's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay, moving on to item number 2020-64. Do I have a volunteer from any of you? Okay, thank you very much. Counselor, it's honestly, please.
This is old business, it may be acted on upon by a majority vote. This is item number 2020-064, in order to approve term of contract change for real property valuation update services in the town of Barnstable, Massachusetts for fiscal years 2021 through 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Again, we have, Mr. Mill?
Thank you. The last one was for personal property, this one's for real property. This is the larger one. The funding for this contract is already in place for fiscal year 2020. It's already been approved. Again, what we're asking for here tonight is to enter into a five-year contract with the vendor as opposed to three-year to lock in savings and budget predictability.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions?
Question?
Second, okay. All those in favor, moving the question?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay, so this is item number 2020-064, order to approve term of contract change for real property valuation update services in the town of Barnstable, Massachusetts for fiscal year 21, 2021 through 2024. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Okay, now, moving on to old business. I'm sorry, new business, that was old business, this is a new business. Any other new counselors? Okay. I think you just got volunteered.
Okay. This is on new business.
Counselor Starr, thank you.
New business, item 2020-066, acceptance of fiscal year 2020 cultural district grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council's Cultural District Grant Program for the Barnstable Village Cultural District.
Second.
Okay, just me. Okay, and speaking to this is Paul.
Hi, Paul Wackrow, Planning and Development. So, this is a grant of $5,000 awarded to the Department of Planning and Development from the Massachusetts Cultural Council in support of the Barnstable Village Cultural District. The funds here will support the design, permitting, and installation of informational signs which showcase the historical and cultural resources in Barnstable Village, and this includes Tales of Cape Cod, Sturgis Library, the Historical Society, the County Courthouse, and the Coast Guard Heritage Museum. These funds are consistent with the state's cultural district initiative and district-specific goals.
Thank you. Counselors? Counselor Rapgrisetti, please.
Thank you. I know a lot of hard work and effort went in to create these cultural districts, not only in Barnstable, but the next one coming up in Hyannis, too. So, and everyone said, well, that's a lot of work for not much gain, but here's the gain that we're eligible for these grants, and that's great to see that. So, I certainly am going to accept the grant.
Any other counselors? Shall we move the question?
Second.
All those in favor? This is, this is again for item number 2020-066, acceptance of a fiscal year 2020 cultural district grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, Council's Cultural District Grant Program for the Barnstable Village Cultural District. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? That's a unanimous, thank you. And we have, do we have one more volunteer? Thank you. Counselor Clark, thank you.
Under new business, may be acted upon, and we need a majority vote. Item number 2020-067, acceptance of fiscal year 2020 cultural district grant in the amount of $6,000 from the Massachusetts Cultural Council, Culturals District Grant Program for the Hyannis High Arts Cultural District.
Second.
Counselors, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, Paul, cutting you out there.
Paul Wackrow, Planning and Development. This is a grant for $6,000 awarded to Planning and Development from the Massachusetts Cultural Council in support of the Hyannis High Arts Cultural District, and these funds will support improving the visual identity of the district with branding and print, radio, and sign materials, including downtown maps, which will be attached to kiosks throughout the downtown area that identify these cultural assets. A portion of these funds will also be used, or are also being used for the Fair Saturday event at the Harbor Overlook Artist Shanties, which features an artist market and activities designed to support the creative economy. And these funds are in line with the goals of the state's cultural district initiative and with district-specific objectives.
Counselors?
I have a question. Who wrote these grants?
These were put together by Melissa Chartrand, our arts and cultural coordinator.
Good, thank you.
Any other counselors? Shall we move the question? What, is that, yes? Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. And that ends the minutes, the orders of the day. So, moving down to, that was in reference to one of the other bills we had before. Yeah, thank you, thank you. Yep, yep. So, now we're down to town elections of the 2020 officers, and I think Madam Clerk takes it from here. Thank you.
Good evening, counselors. This is the fun stuff. Here we go. We're going to start with the office of president, and each person that has been sponsored for president may speak first, and try to keep it to three to five minutes so that we can get along here. So, I have, on my list, I have three people. I have Counselors Cullum, Rapgrisetti, and Hebert. And who would like to start? Rapgrisetti.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I respectfully withdraw my name for consideration for council president, and will be wholeheartedly supporting the candidacy of Counselor Hebert. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, go ahead, Paul.
I think it's better to look at you. Thank you very much. So, counselors, making the decision to seek the position of president or vice president is not taken lightly, and I thank all who are candidates to offer themselves. The president is the chair to conduct the meetings and not to debate unless giving up the gavel. There is much wisdom in this, and it is my experience that good chairs make good and productive meetings. My education experience and experience include an associate's degree in occupational studies, a bachelor's in liberal studies, an honorary degree from Cape Cod Community College for community service. I am the immediate past president of the Cape Cod and Island Selectmen and Counselors Association. I represent Barnstable and the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School Committee, and I am assigned to the Finance Committee. I am an Army veteran, past commissioner for the Barnstable Housing Authority, and president of the Housing for All Corporation for over 25 years. My work on the council has focused on my ability to remain positive and to listen to the public, to other counselors, and to make caring, compassionate, and thoughtful observations, and to vote accordingly. Our shared experience of losing President Crocker showed me that we have become friends and colleagues with appreciation for the gifts, the talents, the experience each of us brings to this council. I have served under the leadership of President Dagwan, of President Rapgrisetti, of President Eric Stein Hilber, and of President James Crocker, always observing and always learning. We are at an important time in our town with infrastructure needs requiring all of us as citizens to work together to accomplish a task ahead of us. I run for president because I believe I can chair the council well, encourage our hard-working committees and commissions, support our management team, and engage our citizens towards the goals at hand. Much of the work of the council is through the committees, leading towards solid recommendations to the full council. Counselors need to be fully engaged in selecting the committees and liaison positions that match your talents, your interests, and your availability. We are supported in our council work by our always-present and supportive administrator, Cynthia Lovell. Is she here? She's working. And her assistant, Kelly Crahan. Our town clerk, Ann Quirk, and assistant clerk, Janet Murphy, who records and guides our voting procedures. We are guided by our legal department, saying Godspeed to Ruth, and welcoming attorneys Karen Nobre and Charlie McLaughlin. And of course, we are blessed by the staff, employees, and departments led by Mark Els. We must recognize the contribution of our citizens in action, serving on committees and commissions, participating in public comment, and contributing information, insights, and recommendations, all for the betterment of our town. My goals are to run quality meetings, making certain that each counselor knows that you are respected and you are appreciated, that the debates are full and lively, that the public comment is welcome and thoughtfully considered and appreciated, that we use our time efficiently and avoid 11:00 PM extensions. Communications on the agenda needs to see regular reports from the ad hoc committees and liaison reports on the committees and commissions. It is critical that we engage the public, the citizens that we each represent. I want to serve and support you, and support you by following the charter, by leveraging our communications to gain public confidence and promoting the council at every opportunity. I do wear my heart on my sleeve, and I demonstrate my creativity, leadership, and compassion through action and service. I thank you for this time, and I know that my intention is to be of service to our town, our public, and to each one of you. We have 13 awesome gifted counselors with distinct talents. Whoever is chosen, we all win. We must, we can, and we will move forward, all of us, all of Barnstable, together. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Counselor Cullum?
I'm going to stay seated here because I can see everybody, I think. I'm going to read for you a letter that I wrote for the four new counselors who hadn't had a chance to serve with me in the past, and I've added a few things. So, let's see, here we go. "I was elected in 2011 to represent precinct 13, mainly Hyannis and the Hyannis Harbor to Green Dunes, including C Street and Hyannis Port. It's truly the land of the haves and the have-nots. I've spent the last eight years working to increase access to opportunity for our youth, no matter what socioeconomic demographic they fall into. To that end, I helped find, found the YMCA Achievers Program, a program that's still growing strong in our community. The program's enrollment focuses on kids that don't have a parent or guardian to help them reach college or guide them into a successful career. The Achievers, led by Renee King, puts opportunity in front of high school students and helps them seize it, and it's given over 50 students thus far an opportunity to go to college for free based upon the YMCA's ties in our community. I accomplished this by asking for donations from key stakeholders in the community like the now-defunct LaRusso Foundation, the Sheriff's Office, Cape Cod Healthcare, Cheryl Bartlett, other leaders in the community. Together, Stacy Pugh, who's the CEO of the YMCA Cape Cod, and I gathered over $150,000 to get the program off the ground. Now it's spread to Yarmouth. It has a membership of hundreds of kids. It's a living, breathing part of Barnstable now, improving lives every single day. It's money in the bank for all of us, especially those who benefit directly from the program, the kids themselves. I also mobilized and emboldened the Youth Commission. While it existed when I was elected, it was in disarray. This group is a high school group, not just Barnstable High, but Pope John Paul, et cetera, that answers not to the school committee but to the town council itself. This is crucial. They have very effectively arranged drug prevention seminars annually since my involvement. These kids are the bravest among their peers. They address very serious concerns like teen homelessness and suicide, relationship violence among boyfriends and girlfriends, and boyfriends and boyfriends, and girlfriends and girlfriends. They ask hard questions, and they earn their seat at the table, sometimes, excuse me, sometimes ruffling the feathers of the school committee and others. And I love that because they're asking pertinent, real questions that need to be asked. Last week, or this is now a few weeks old, they went to the State House recently. I couldn't be more proud of their work. One member, former member, Matt Hershey, whose father served on the town council with some of us, was awarded a full-time paid internship to Harvard for this January to June 2020 because of his involvement in planning the annual prevention summit that they do every year. This is an amazing accomplishment. Go, Matt. Super smart kid. I have worked on legislation to strengthen our community through the Problem Properties Ordinance. The goal was to get absentee landlords to the plate to address serious strife in neighborhoods. Together, Ann Kennedy and I worked to create an ordinance that increased communication among BPD and the absentee landlords and the tenants that live there. And now, we're working to amend that with our zoning, our zoning committee here to include resident homeowners and short-term renters. It's a work in progress, but I know we're all going to get it done. The town council, for me, is a place for individual and group goals. Everyone brings something to the table. I believe in safe neighborhoods, access to higher learning for all people of all socioeconomic levels. This is just my personal thing. Other voices on the council work on their own priorities, on how to make Barnstable a better place to live. I've always welcomed all voices at the table. I welcome all ideas for discussion. In the past few years, we've had very strong leadership on the council to build sewer infrastructure, mainly driven by Counselor Crocker. This is an important and necessary number-one priority, and I'll continue to push it forward. But we have many policy decisions to make in the upcoming months regarding who will pay for it and how to pay for it, and I'm sure we will come to the agreement for the betterment of the town after a lot of discussion. I don't think any of us disagree that the road will be long, but it must nonetheless be traveled. Recognizing the need to maintain the spinning plates that stand in front of us with regard to sewer-ing, rezoning, and drilling new wellheads, my list of priorities goes something like this. My number-one priority right now is to improve the communication from this council and this town hall to our neighborhoods and constituents. It's abundantly clear, just from tonight, the 310 Main Street, that there are all sorts of sources of misinformation, and I've recommended many times, and I stand behind it 100%, we need our professional department heads to have their CVs available online for people to see. So... department heads to have their CVs available online for people to see, so that we're taken seriously. We need one communications director. We need one truth coming from the town, not, this was seen online here, I heard this at this meeting, a department assistant told me that. That just can't happen anymore. We're dealing with real problems that are expensive. And I think we owe it to our staff to provide them that, one person to disseminate the truth. I want to give Four Seas a shot in the arm. I think our community and all of Cape Cod would benefit so much from a stronger community college. So many people can't afford a four-year university. Access to higher education should be a top priority for us all. If you go to Four Seas now during the day, you could land an airplane there. There's no full-time student body during the day at all. If we boost dual enrollment, Cape-wide, and provide access to all students of all towns to this program, we benefit not only as a region but as a town. I have dreams of dorms and sports teams again there. We could and should be the educational center for Cape Cod. And talk about stabilizing our year-round economy, we wouldn't really have to worry about Sharknado anymore. The HYCC has given us an economic windfall for its support of skating competitions and hockey tournaments. I can't imagine there will be any pushback, just politics. And we can solve that. Mark Els and I have already had many conversations and have started moving the ball on this. If you think about a year-round population in the winter in Hyannis or in Barnstable, how much that would benefit us for all of our costly things coming up, our $1 million a year that we need in new development and new taxes. Another thing that's come out of this committee for zoning that really concerns me, and it also kind of, I guess dovetails a little bit more with the communications part of it, is that we saw some GIS mapping from Amherst, Massachusetts, that included permits that were pulled on properties, ran by property base, permits, police calls, rental registration, all of these things. But right now, our departments don't talk to each other that way. We can't click on a property and see what the police see, and see if the fire station has inspected, or if there's been a violation. We don't have that kind of cross-referencing. And we really need that moving forward. Because if we're going to support what people are asking us to do with regard to rental registration, we need to be able to see each property. And I've spoken with Mark Els about that, too, and when he ran the DPW, he had interns do all that. So I think we can do it for short money, and I think we should do it. I think we owe it to our constituents to be able to show that, that our systems are talking to each other, that you don't call 200Maine and have somebody not know that you've had a problem with the police at the same place. I think we need to find a place for market-rate housing and affordable housing. We all know it's time to consider changing the way we do business with regard to our housing. Our future will require us to be more limber. We should work to make zoning palatable to developers. We need housing for our residents, and we need new growth dollars to drive our sewer project. We should be considering nautical road and fresh holes as areas that are ripe for redevelopment to answer this calling, and we should be doing it responsibly, so that we don't put anybody out in the cold, so that we're helping rehouse as we redevelop. That's what we need to do. I want to decentralize services. I've wanted to do this since I started being a councillor eight years ago. Partner with community health centers down Cape to alleviate the stress on Hyannis neighborhoods. Services, while incredibly necessary, are very costly to our community. Barnstable bears the brunt of all of this. The entire bill for the homeless rests on the shoulders of Barnstable. Duffy's business model does not include decentralizing. It's too expensive. So we need to look at creative ways to help our town with a burden. I want to work toward the certification of sober homes, because right now, the people who are living in sober homes are suffering from no regulation. They're not safe. And as sewers become a reality throughout our town, so will sober homes. I believe we need to work with state to compel all sober homes to be registered with a mass association of sober homes, or an equal or different agency, to increase safety and accountability. Trust me when I tell you, nothing changes the feel of a neighborhood like a family home selling to a sober home. I know that firsthand. They are currently unregulated and unsafe for people in recovery, which ultimately strains neighborhoods. Lastly, I'm aware that I have a somewhat prickly reputation, and that's okay with me. The bottom line is that I ran for office to make change, not to make friends. I have, of course, made some very, very good friends along the way. And it turns out that after eight years on the council, I have the most respect for those that have asked the hard questions, legislated the hard policy, and then voted decisively with an open mind. I have been at every leadership meeting since President Crocker died, and I believe I'm the only one up here. I never abstain. I believe I was elected to take a stand. I always had a policy that all committees need to be comprised of a combination of different viewpoints, and whenever I had the opportunity, I weighed in on that. My one current committee that I feel doesn't have a lot of different viewpoints is the zoning committee, and that was President Crocker's appointments. Whenever chair of a committee, I've always allowed for public comment, I always allow for public comment, and always allow other viewpoints to be discussed. I believe that this is the essence of what we do. Circumspect discussion leads to the best legislation. And I would continue these policies if elected into a leadership position. I believe that we all have something to offer. Councillor Hebert would be an awesome president. And the reality is, we're both gonna continue to lead in our own way anyway. In our own way anyway, we're gonna continue to lead. So, I don't know why this is always the hardest time of year for me, but it really is. Thank you for considering me. I really appreciate it, and I look forward to working with you all, regardless of this outcome of this. Thank you. Cheers.
Thank you, Councillor Cullum. All right, we're gonna start the voting. Oops, sorry.
Is there any opportunity for people to speak in support? Okay. Thanks. Thank you very much. I'd like to voice my support for Jen Cullum, which of course is not a surprise since I nominated her, but I would like to say a word or two about that and why I did this. This is a decision to elect the individual with the focus and understanding to lead us in the year ahead. Over the next 12 months, we will be faced with a number of very challenging, and in some cases, a difficult, decisions such as our $1 million sewer project. In addition, things come up along the way where we need to be flexible and adapt to as we move forward. We need a strong and decisive leader who will work with town staff to move the largest infrastructure project the town will likely ever face going forward, and I see that leadership in Jen Cullum. I'd like to say a word about our relationship. I know Jen to be a generous and supportive councillor. She was the first one to personally welcome me to the council, and she was a mentor to me. When you come on this dais for the first time, it is a huge learning curve. There are a lot of things that just seem mind-boggling. It seems a whole lot easier before you actually sit here. And then you get here, and there are questions even about process. How does the meeting get run? And you think you know it, but then when you get up here, you find it's sometimes a little bit more complex than you think. And there were more than a dozen or so instances where I would nudge Jen and say, I'm confused here, or what is this statement that I'm looking at? Or I would call her up and say, this subject came up at town council, and I know you had some history with this, could you fill me in? And I always found her to be always forthcoming with information, very helpful. That said, Jen and I don't agree on everything, and that's okay. Councillor Cullum understands the importance of constituent communications, as she's just expressed, and community engagement. She seeks out the dissenting opinion or opposing view so that we can better reach the middle or compromise position on an issue. She understands the importance of zoning, driving economic development where we want it and where we don't, and how this will help address our housing shortage. She has a track record of rolling up her sleeves and getting the work done. She may be overly blunt at times, but those hard edges are about substance. She knows how to identify a problem, who to reach out to, with whom to connect, and works tirelessly towards a solution. As she has said many times, the best legislation is through circumspect discussion. Her record reflects her experience in leadership. She has spent the last eight years working to increase opportunities for our youth, for example. As she mentioned, she was a founder of the YMCA Achievers Club. She mobilized the Youth Commission. She has led on issues that affect quality of life. She led the charge to address the Problem Properties Ordinance and absentee landlords. She is currently chairing the zoning and reg committee and leading the charge on addressing issues surrounding short-term rentals. She also chairs the homelessness committee. I admire her ability to bring all voices to the table, to always make sure that progress is made, that goals are set for the next meeting, and that everyone has a task to accomplish. She is not afraid to speak honestly or say the things that are uncomfortable. This is a sign of leadership, to be courageous and at times to stand alone.
The field is open. Does anyone else want to say things in support?
Again, as Councillor Beedenbender says, no surprise, I nominated Councillor Hebert to be the president of the council, and I do feel I need to say something in regards to that. And, you know, like similar experience, Paul Hebert was the first person to reach out to me when I first got elected to the council. It was actually on my way to vacation with my family, and he left me such a kind message that I was in the terminal, and I felt on an escalator, felt so inclined to call him back, and we had a great conversation. And his humbleness, his willingness to, he really lives by the motto of that we have, we were born with two ears and one mouth, therefore we should listen twice as much as we speak. And he's been somebody I can count on to call when I want to bond some ideas, and again, is quick to listen and to give thoughtful consideration, and I admire that. He's shown me, you know, what a compassionate councillor is, and again, his reputation precedes him as far as his service to the community, and that's why I really want to put my support behind her. And again, great respect for Councillor Cullum and all that she has accomplished as well. But at this time, I do feel so inclined to give my support to Paul Hebert. Thank you.
Any other councillors would like to speak? Okay, we're gonna close this at this point, and now we're gonna go to the vote. So when I call your name, it's a roll call, you'll tell me the name of the person you want as president. Okay. Beedenbender.
Councillor Jen Cullum.
Bogan.
Hebert.
Clark.
Although I'd be comfortable with either, I'm voting for Paul Hebert.
Thank you. Cullum.
Gee, this is a tough one. I guess me.
Dagwan.
Councillor Hebert.
Rap Grissette.
Councillor Hebert.
Hebert.
Councillor Hebert.
Levec.
Councillor Hebert.
Neary.
Councillor Cullum.
Councillor Cullum.
Councillor Hebert.
Did I miss anybody?
Yes.
Shaughnessy. Sorry, Shaughnessy. I knew I missed somebody.
Councillor Cullum.
Cullum, okay. So it's five for Cullum, and eight for Mr. Councillor Hebert. So congratulations, Councillor Hebert, you are now the president. Now we start the next round, and that is for Vice President. So who would like to speak first? Yes, Mr. Councillor Levec.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank my friend, Councillor Paul Hebert, for the nomination of Vice President. It's an honor just to be thought of in that way by himself. And I have great respect for both councilwomen who also nominated for Vice President, and after much conversation, some very valued constructive criticism, thoughtful consideration, I would like to withdraw my nomination and direct my support to Councillor Rap Grissette because of her past leadership, representation in the West Villages. And again, I valued this process. I thank you for the opportunity to have this self-evaluation, and I think I will be a better councillor because of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Levec. And Councillors Beedenbender and Councillors Rap Grissette.
Well, thank you, and congratulations, President Hebert. And thank you to my fellow councillor, Clark, for nominating me, and I will accept the nomination for council vice president. Having it been suggested and asked by citizens and several councillors to consider the role of Vice President during this unprecedented and unfortunate vacancy in leadership, I'm prepared to serve our newly-elected president in the formation and transition of his council leadership. I'm also here to ensure, to the best of my ability, that the public in whatever village of the town is afforded an open and fair representation. That's it. Thank you.
And as well, congratulations, President Hebert. The past two years in the council have been an incredibly rewarding, eye-opening, and invigorating experience. My precinct has been ground zero for Vineyard, the Vineyard Wind Project, the CWMP, and as well as proposed zoning changes to Route 28 and a little thing called the pump station. The year ahead promises a myriad of exciting opportunities for us, as well as some major challenges. We have a number of difficult decisions to make in regard to the financing of our wastewater infrastructure plan. I am asking for your vote for Vice President, because I believe that I would serve both the council and the town of Barnstable in that role well. In regards to communications, I have been a big proponent of constituent communication since I began on the council. I have done it when it has been uncomfortable and the room was against me. I have gone out of my way to communicate with constituents, even when matters before the council, such as zoning changes, did not require the council to do so. I think we can do a better job at town council, sharing the work we do on committees, so that we create a fuller picture of what the council is working on. It also creates greater transparency for the public. I think the town should have a public information officer to coordinate all communications for the town, who can help develop a comprehensive strategy around informing the public around important issues. And I know these are all things that President Hebert cares about as well. Moving forward, one of our more pressing issues across the Cape is housing, and this is a priority for the town of Barnstable. In my day job, I work full-time for a community development corporation on the Lower Cape. For those of you who are unfamiliar with CDCs, they are organizations, they are nonprofits that work on a very local level on housing and economic development. So this is an issue about which I am both passionate and I have some knowledge in. We also need to continue working on developing opportunities for businesses to thrive and grow in Barnstable, and we need to ensure that our residents and those who travel in from surrounding communities have year-round jobs that give them some security. I will always keep the environment as my number-one priority, and will continue to look for ways that the town of Barnstable can lead the way on issues such as reducing plastics, pesticides, and fertilizers in our environment, as well as promoting a continued greening of our town through renewables and other initiatives. I know that you share these concerns as well. Our homeless population is of great concern to me, and I want to work with our local social service agencies to find a solution to helping this population and ending chronic homelessness in our town. Finally, I have proven that when it matters, I can make difficult decisions even in the face of great opposition. I don't abstain, I take a position, and I justify it. I also, much like some of my other councillors have expressed, very much believe in bringing all opinions to the table, coming to consensus, and doing so in an open and generous fashion. So I ask for your vote, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councillor Beedenbender. Does anyone have anything to say?
This probably is gonna shock you guys, but I'm gonna say some words about Britt. Britt has become such a good friend over the years of working here on the council, and I admire her for many reasons. I find her incredibly intelligent, and I admire her experience in nonprofit and housing. I admire her thoughtful and circumspect view at difficult topics, and most recently, I really admire her for voting for that pump station, even though her constituency came out not understanding, I don't think, the full gravity of the situation. That was a really difficult move, and you really earned some stripes in my book for I admire the love of nature and the unending desire to keep the beaches clean, and how, you know, after, I don't know how you get your energy, how you find your energy, because after a full day of work, I'm zonked, but you're at the beach on Sunday morning at 7:00 cleaning it up, and going to the Resilient Roots thing, and always posting positive things about... ...
Resilient Roots thing, and always posting positive things about animal welfare and about housing possibilities and positive changes in the town. And I'm thankful for our friendship, and I think that you really provide a depth of responsible citizenship here. I remember when you wanted to bring that coyote ordinance forward, and you were very unfairly shut down, in my opinion, on that. I just... I remember that... I know what that feels like, because sometimes when your head's strong, like you and I might be accused of being one day or another, your intent is misinterpreted. The marijuana policy, for instance, that we brought forward was something that needed to be discussed. That was an uncomfortable thing for people, but we brought it forward anyway with the help of Counselor Schnep. And we received a fair amount of pushback for it. I mean, I was still answering questions when I said I wanted to run for president. What are you going to do about pot? I'm not going to do anything about pot. We needed to have the discussion. And you're always there for those hard discussions, and I think that is a key proponent of leadership that is necessary here, and I'll support you in this and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cullum. Anybody else like to speak? Yes, Deborah Dagwan.
Yes. I admire both of these candidates. And so I broke down just a few things that I wanted to say. In 2013, I was the council president. Counselor Rap Grissette was my vice president, and I enjoyed working with her very much. However, my support came from the council president before me. He had the confidence... He and other counselors had the confidence in me and were proud that I stepped up to be council president. The council will always, and has always, had hard, tough issues and decisions to make, and that would also be the case for all the new counselors that are here tonight. I had support from all of the departments, the collector's office, the IT's office, the town manager, the finance department, Public Works, and of course, the council executive administrator. At the time, Cindy was becoming... Well, didn't know it, but she was in the process of moving to the top slot, and it was a pleasure to work with both of them. I feel that I was given the opportunity to have the experience to be in a leadership role. And I was told when I ran for council president that this role, it should be interchangeable. We have some very intelligent... I'm so proud of all of the candidates and all of the ones that stepped up to apply for this position, for the leadership position. And I think each and every one of you should have that opportunity, if that's something you want to do. Next year, we'll be sitting here at the same time, December around this time, voting again for council president and vice president. I'm putting my support behind a new candidate. I think that I'd like to see others have the opportunity to be in the leadership role. They bring something to the table that others have, you know, don't bring. So I'm putting my support behind Counselor Beedenbender. I know she's a strong candidate, and I don't see any fall... I mean, the transition being anything that she can't handle. I, as a council president, had no experience. I didn't have the opportunity to be a vice president. But I had a successful year because of all the people that stepped in and supported me, and I could reach all the professionals here in the town. And so I know in the future, many of you are going to want to run for leadership office, and I hope that you will be provided the opportunity, the same opportunity that Counselor Rap Grissette and myself were provided. So my support will be behind Counselor Beedenbender this afternoon.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to the vote. I'm going to start with the second person in line. That's Counselor Bogan.
Rap Grissette.
Clark.
Although I'd be happy with either candidate, my support is for Counselor Rap Grissette.
Cullum.
Counselor Beedenbender.
Dagwan.
Counselor Beedenbender.
Rap Grissette.
Rap Grissette.
Hebert.
Rap Grissette.
Levec.
Rap Grissette.
Neary.
Rap Grissette.
Schnep. Shaughnessy.
Beedenbender.
Starr.
Beedenbender.
Stein-Hilber.
Rap Grissette. One, two, three, four, five, six...
That's seven for Rap Grissette. Oh, wait a minute, Beedenbender, sorry.
Equally difficult. I vote for myself.
Okay. Two, three, four, five, six. Seven, six. Now. Okay, my portion is done, except to say congratulations, and I look forward to a great year working with all of you.
So we need to close the meeting yet. But just a few thoughts on that. So the little jingle goes, what, it's the happiest time of the year? And several of our... Several people in talking today said, "Not when you're in the town council, because this is the time that we select who our leader's going to be." And the leaders are not the bosses. The leaders are really here to make sure that we go with dignity, and we make sure that everybody gets a chance to express themselves and to move forward. So I thank all of you for participating in this. There was a time when I was newly on the council that I looked at, looking at the charter, I said, "We were very, very close at one point, and it went down to defeat by just a handful of votes." There was another charter option, and that was to have the president elected town-wide by the voters, kind of becoming, if you will, a mayor for the community. And then I realized that that maybe wasn't the best choice for us, because the system that we have is that we work together, really, as a team, so that if that person was elected and would most probably be more of a popular vote, that skews what we have established here, our ability to work with one another. And you select who you want to lead you. And it is a very difficult choice. There's only 13 of us, and so, you know, when we look at how it folds out, everybody here had a lot of dignity in this. So again, as I look at the charter as it stands, as it exists now, the president is not supposed to be a forceful figure, but one that allows and magnifies the work of all of you. The work, Jen and Britt, that you have done in committees is fabulous. There's no other word for it. And Britt, you know that there's been times that I've said to you, "You're going to move on up. You're going to run for state rep right now," you know? And so... And that wasn't to put pressure on you, it's just that that's who you are. I mean, you're a phenomenal researcher and worker, as Jen is, and that's gift. You have a gift to do that. So my job is to make sure that you get all the support that you need to move your programs forward. We were suffering for a little while there because the town said that the leadership ran this council, and that therefore, they were the force to be dealt with. But I'm saying to you, to you all, you are the force to be dealt with. My job is to magnify your efforts to make sure that your programs and stuff that you're putting forward gets accepted and moved forward, because it's all great ideas. So I hope that we can just move forward together. It was a great show, great, great opportunity to express who you are, and you're magnificent. So again, I thank everybody for running, but now we move forward as one group. Thank you very much. Any other business to attend to?
Adjourning.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning? Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.